Right, okay, noting the hour and the and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. This meeting is being taped by Acton TV, so thank you for that. All right, well, we're not quite a full committee, but we do have a quorum. We have a kind of packed evening tonight with quite a bit of, quite a few presentations. So I'd like to start with public participation. Invite anybody that's come to the meeting tonight to speak to something that's not on the agenda. You're welcome to come up to the mic. You have two minutes. Okay, seeing no one, then I will hand it over to our high school reps.
Right, okay, noting the hour and the and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. This meeting is being taped by Acton TV, so thank you for that. All right, well, we're not quite a full committee, but we do have a quorum. We have a kind of packed evening tonight with quite a bit of, quite a few presentations. So I'd like to start with public participation. Invite anybody that's come to the meeting tonight to speak to something that's not on the agenda. You're welcome to come up to the mic. You have two minutes. Okay, seeing no one, then I will hand it over to our high school reps.
Hello, they trusted me to do everything. I'm Caroline, for those who forget. So a week ago, we had back-to-school night, and it was a big hit. Lots of parents went. Teachers enjoyed meeting everyone. My parents had a good time. Another thing, so the school's been really trying to make the seniors have less stress lately. So every Friday, there's a, it's like Senior Friday in a computer lab where seniors can come in, get extra help on college applications, essays, and that's really helpful. And definitely, everyone I've spoken to in my grade finds it relieving that there's that extra support. And career speakers were yesterday. I did not attend. Michael did, and half my physics class was out that day, or that period. So I'm assuming that was also a very big success. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you so much. All right, and I will hand it over to Peter to do his update.
All right, so I do have a number of updates for you. Not the least of which, it is Paul Murphy's birthday today. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. As I've heard as tradition, the junior member from Acton leads us in happy birthday. As I've heard as tradition, the junior member from Acton leads us in happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Paul. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much, John. You were surprised I got to do that, huh? I was not. So a few updates for you. First, we got some good news. The other day, we are the recipient of an $80,000 grant from the state for security infrastructure upgrades. So yesterday, I attended a roundtable discussion on school security at which Governor Baker announced the recipients of the school security grants. It was announced that the Acton-Boxborough schools were awarded $80,000 for security improvements across the district. It's noteworthy that $80,000 was the maximum grant awarded to any of the districts. These funds will be used to continue to improve electronic access control at our schools. So for those of you that don't know what access control is, that's the key card swipe in the fobs for security purposes at our doors. We take the safety and security, obviously, of all of our students and staff seriously and annually budget for improvements that are identified by our staff, administrators, and local law enforcement. These grant funds, though, will help us supplement local funds that are used to improve our school security. And I also included a link if you are interested in reading the full text of the press release, so that's in your update. I also want to congratulate one of our teachers. Acton-Boxborough Minuteman teacher Brian Crossman, who works at RJ Gray Junior High School, received a Teacher of the Ward-A Year from the, and I want to make sure I get this correct, the Middle School Teacher of the Year Award by the Massachusetts Technology Education and Engineering Collaborative, which is MasTech. Congratulations to Brian on the wonderful achievement. We're thrilled about all that he brings to the engineering program at RJ Gray. And again, I also give you a link to the news article if you'd like to read more. I'm happy to report that Tessa and I hosted our first Superintendent School Committee Coffee with the community last Friday. It was a great opportunity to connect with families. We had just about 20 families or family members in attendance, which is a wonderful turnout for our first one. Wide-ranging topics. I will tell you, we've discussed everything from early literacy initiatives across the district to high school schedules, school start times, and the possibility to make microwaves available for students in our cafeterias. So lots of topics, all great things to hear from parents about what's on their minds. Our next community coffee is scheduled for Friday, November 15th, in the Edmond Auditorium, so we're hopeful families, more families can continue to join us. I also want to give you one more update on our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Community Advisory Group. This is the last update for a little period of time here, but Dr. Bentley and I just recently sent out notifications to family and community members who had expressed interest in serving on our DEI Family and Community Advisory Group. We were fortunate to have received over 70 applications representing a broad range of experiences and backgrounds from across the district for the committee. Forty representatives were scheduled to serve on the advisory group. We wanted to make that as inclusive a process, but also needed to make sure it was a manageable size. And unfortunately, we just couldn't manage a group of 70 people. We would have loved to. But we did end up going with 40 people that very broadly represent the diversity of the community and also roles in professional worlds to make sure that it was really a broad-ranging thinking group. I don't think that made any sense, but hopefully you got the idea. You know, sometimes you just thought of it. We're excited to begin our work with the group next week, so we want to just make sure we thank everyone who extended the interest in participating on that group. It takes a lot for people to put themselves out there. I wish that we could accept everyone every time we had an opportunity like that. But unfortunately, we just got overwhelming response and had to narrow that down a little bit. Finally, actually, it's the penultimate one, but it's the last one on your printed version, and then I have one additional one. There's a great picture here that I chose to share with you. We had Dr. Joanna Kristodulu present to our kindergarten teachers around early literacy and particularly the science around dyslexia, the cognitive research behind that. That was at our grade level meeting earlier this month. Just so you know, for professional learning, for our elementary educators, we do a full grade level day with each grade level every year in order to provide current curricular updates, research on teaching and learning practices, share best practices across grade levels, and that's a district-wide professional learning day. So all kindergarten teachers across the district have the same experience with this. And so she put up this great slide, which I thought was fantastic. If you take a look at it, it's a series of license plates that is compiled. I believe this was at one of the national museums, and I apologize, I don't know which one offhand. But it's fascinating to read, and it is used to illustrate the difficulty of someone with dyslexia in decoding language. And the difficulty in the amount of time that it takes our kids to make meaning out of words that don't necessarily have a meaning to them because of decoding issues. So what was great about this professional learning day, not only was it our grade-level teachers, but we had administrators, both school and district administrators from across all schools and districts attend, as well as a lot of our special education staff. So it was a great kickoff to what we hope is going to be a very long and focused effort on improving our early literacy outcomes for our students. So hopefully you enjoy that picture. And then my final update for you, and I apologize it didn't make it into the printed version, but I wanted to also share with you that we are undertaking an effort to improve the effectiveness of our social, emotional, behavioral, and counseling supports in a way that's sustainable for our staff. If you remember, last year during budget season, we had to make some difficult decisions about what we could add in terms of social, emotional supports across the district, but we said we were going to come back and study that further. So what we did choose, what we choose to do in the future is strategic, and it targets the needs in a way that's sustainable for the community and sustainable for our staff and makes a lot of sense for what kids need. While we're very proud of the quality of supports, we have fantastic, fantastic counseling staff across the district, as well as all of our related service providers who support the social, emotional needs. Even higher expectations require us to look for ways to further increase supports for our student without increasing the stress on our staff. The district has engaged the District Management Group, a Boston-based organization, to assist with this project. Some of you may be familiar with Nate Levinson's work. He wrote the book Smarter Schools, Smarter Budgets. The study is going to examine our current services, programs, procedures, and staffing for supporting students' social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health needs through the use of quantitative, both in-district and benchmarked district information, and qualitative data gathering using focus groups, stakeholder interviews, and classroom observations. The review will also help the district understand how various categories of staff use their time as they serve students. With this information, the district will be able to make thoughtful and informed decisions to ensure all of our students and staff receive appropriate support. The result should be a better picture of what is working well in the district, a better understanding of what the appropriate level of staff and services are, overall improved delivery of student services to parents and students, and to better understand how we actually use the current resources that we have. We're excited to be undertaking this study and appreciate your support in the process. I'll be sure to keep you updated as we move forward, and you will certainly also receive a copy of the results once those are in. We do expect this study to last just into January before we receive some final information back from District Management Group. And then the study that we engaged in also includes consulting after the fact to help actually plan for implementation of some of the recommendations. So District Managing Group is a fantastic organization to work with. They're probably the most comprehensive of all the organizations that we've looked at in terms of not only the process that they undertake in their use of data and benchmarking against norms and standards, but also in how they follow up with districts to make sure that the recommendations that come forward can be implemented in a thoughtful way. So that's it for the superintendent's update for tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just wanted to comment that both my children had the good fortune to have Brian Crossman as a teacher, and those classes, which very much reflect, you know, the steam theme that was hit last time, were very popular with my children and I believe with many, many other children as well. So I'm very happy to see him recognized in this way.
So, Brendan, I think we're all set. So I have the pleasure, if you remember last spring, we announced that Dr. Bentley was the recipient of the Alumni Award from Michigan State University. I don't believe it's the Michigan State University, is it? No, okay, that's just Ohio. Okay, Midwest thing, I know. But, which is a tremendous honor, and we are thrilled to do that. We wanted to wait until we got into the season where we could actually have some effective video conferences, and I'm very pleased to welcome, and I'm going to try really hard to pronounce it the right way, Dr. Madali Madra Badada. Is that close?
You're, you're close, yes.
I'm close, and I'm so sorry. I practiced before, I actually had gone, quiz me on it. I had it at one point, so I apologize.
Well, there's a reason why here at Michigan State they call me Dr. Maddie, so that's fine.
I, I said, I said, you know, can I just do Dr. Maddie? And she said, that's actually what everyone calls her, and so. But thank you so much for joining us. Dr. Maddie is going to present the award to Dr. Bentley officially, and we are thrilled to welcome you all the way from Michigan.
Yeah, thank you so much for allowing me to join you during your, your meeting tonight. So as, as was mentioned, I am a faculty member at Michigan State University, and I have to give the obligatory "Go Green." And just to, to give you all a little bit of a sense of who we are in the College of Education at Michigan State, we consider the College of Ed to be a dynamic place for learning to teach and lead. We have a really longstanding tradition around excellence in education in our college. So folks in Michigan know this, folks in Massachusetts may not, so I think it's worth mentioning that our elementary and secondary teacher preparation programs have been ranked number one by U.S. News &amp; World Report for 25 years running. And our educational administration and supervision program is also a top-five program nationwide according to U.S. News &amp; World Report. So we consider ourselves to be a direct competitor with that little institution down the road in Cambridge, so close to y'all. So I am pleased to join you today to honor one of our esteemed alumni and your colleague. Specifically, I'd like to present Dr. Dawn Bentley, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, with the Nancy Cole-Flesh Distinguished Alumni Award from the Department of Educational Administration at Michigan State University. This award was established in 2014 to recognize educational administration alumni who are excellent educational practitioners or researchers in the area of educational leadership. And our faculty selects up to two individuals to receive this award each year. Dr. Bentley completed her Master's in Educational Leadership at Michigan State in 2001 and her Doctorate in Educational Leadership in 2015. And I have to just add here, this is not in my notes, but, you know, you guys, we were, we were so sad to see her leave the state of Michigan, and our loss is your gain. Let me just put it that way. This award specifically honors the contributions made by a K-12 Educational Administration alumna, Dr. Nancy Cole-Flesh, who during her 12 years as an adjunct professor and three years as an assistant professor of practice in our department, did wonderful work. She specifically has worked as an educational consultant with aspiring and practicing educational leaders in districts across the state, and I also happen to know that she is a real mentor for Dr. Bentley as well, and has been a longtime mentor for her. As Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Dr. Bentley has expanded her leadership portfolio in your district, overseeing special education, English-language education, counseling services, preschool education, homeless services, civil rights, bullying, and social, emotional learning initiatives. And our understanding is that she has very quickly established herself as a respected educational leader across your state. Some of her most significant work that our committee really honed in on, and one of the reasons we selected her for this award, is the focus that she's had on suicide awareness and prevention, and also just the fact that she is an exceptionally bright educational leader who's very quick to learn and access resources for all students' learning and very capable of promoting positive change. So I am thrilled to present Dr. Bentley with this award, and I really want to offer her a hearty congratulations, so we can all applaud now. And I think I can see Dr. Bentley off there, I think, in orange, is that right? Yes, there she is. You can always spot the lady in orange. And I want to just show everybody, and we have not sent this out because we're going to present it to her again when she visits us in Michigan, but this is the award that Dr. Bentley will be receiving, and we anticipate this will go in a very prominent location in your office, Dr. Bentley. Thank you all so much for having me, and congratulations again, Dawn. We're really, really proud of you.
So Dawn, huge congratulations. I don't know if you want to say a couple of words, but I see some people in the audience wearing green.
There are some state fans.
I don't know if you want to say a couple of words about who's joining us?
Yes, so my husband, Ethan, my two sons, Griffin and Cooper, they're ninth and sixth graders here, and my mom and dad, Nancy and Alan. Many of you know Nancy from her baking only and not necessarily her face. So that's the baker that, when I always have treats and I say Nancy bakes, that's who has baked them. So thanks for being here with me tonight, family. And Nancy has been a mentor and was a former professor of mine. I've known her for 20 years, and so knowing the depth of her work, this is beyond humbling to have been selected to, not just from the university perspective to be a distinguished alumni, but also because of the name that it carries. So thanks again for being here with us tonight, Dr. Maddie, and I look forward to receiving it in person.
Sounds great. Thank you all again so much. Congrats, Dawn.
Okay, so we have a couple of pres, we have a couple of presentations tonight, the first of which is Nadine Exstrom, who is the Executive Director of the EDCO Collaborative. She has come tonight to share general information about the collaborative and its activities. Inside your packet, the EDCO First Quarter Report has been included so that you can take a look at it, and hopefully you're able to get a little bit of a taste before she presents. So welcome, Ms. Exstrom.
Thank you, and I didn't know I was going to have to follow that.
Yeah, sorry.
Nadine, if you don't mind, if I just quickly set the table a little bit.
Nadine had reached out maybe a few weeks ago and said she was always welcome to come to a school committee meeting, and where I thought that we have a number of new members over the last few years who may or may not be familiar with what EDCO does as a collaborative, it would be good to have Nadine come, talk a little bit about EDCO, and kind of present the first quarter report live as opposed to just seeing it on paper. So welcome, Nadine.
Sure, thank you, thank you. So you did receive your first quarter report. Every quarter, as regulated by Massachusetts, we are to provide, collaboratives are to provide their members with reports every quarter. So if there's something specific that you ever like to do, it's always great to let Peter know, and he can give me that information. But typically, we have a format that we do pretty much each quarter to give you an update. Usually, your February or January report is usually our annual report from the year before, so that's like your second quarter. But I do like to send you some more updates about some of our enrollment. But just before I actually, I, I'll actually just leave if there's any questions to the first quarter at, at the end, but what I'd like to do first is maybe just give a little bit of an overview of what is EDCO, and what is, what is a collaborative, and, and what do we do. So I have a couple of little notes that I'm going to go by and explain to you, but I will say that EDCO Collaborative, when we meet with the auditors every year, they always tell us EDCO Collaborative is really one of the most complex collaboratives in the state of Massachusetts because we do so many different things. We work with federal grants, contracted with federal grants, state grants, and then we work also with specialized services as well as professional development. So we're very complex, there's actually 26 different departments in, within EDCO itself. But EDCO Collaborative is one of 25 collaboratives across the state of Massachusetts, and we consider ourselves an extension of a public school system. So we are considered oftentimes an out-of-district placement. If you have students that require some out-of-district placements, districts do try to work more with collaboratives first before you can start to work with private school districts, unless, of course, students have more severe needs, then that's probably not always the match. But we are actually celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. On November 22nd, we're celebrating it at the White, at the State House in Massachusetts and in Boston, not the White House, we, we'll, we'll avoid that one. But we also are an organization that began with, it used to be a corporation prior to the state of Massachusetts required legislation to have collaboratives. EDCO Collaborative actually was an organization, a corporation, that provided special education training and regular education training to, to individuals who are interested in becoming educators. So that actually, those districts were anywhere about 22 districts that served across the greater Boston area. And then in the 1970s, we actually serviced nearly 3,000 students through EDCO Collaborative, but it was actually by having programs within different school systems. So schools used to have space to be able to provide opportunities for collaboratives, and gradually, as districts have expanded their enrollment, the collaborators have moved out and have had to find other spaces in organization, organizations to host their programs and their school programs. But we have, we have a mission that has actually remained the same for nearly 50 years, and it's really, the focus is very, very similar to your own mission, actually. I was reading your mission as I was sitting in the audience, but really developing a collaboration and a collaborative approach, providing high-quality instruction. We also, on our end, we want to really look at our cost-effectiveness of our programs and what we can do for that, but working mostly with students with at-risk disabilities. EDCO services many districts across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but we do have 16 members, and of course, Acton-Boxborough is one of the members in the, in our organization. Our leadership team, we used to have eight individuals in our leadership team. The restructuring, my predecessor had restructured it, so that we now have five administrators in the central office. And that focuses on myself as the executive director, we have an administrator of special education, a business manager, technology director, and a director for professional learning, because we still are, if you think of EDCO, in our Bedford office, we're actually divided up into two sections. We've got a school side, and then we have a professional development side as well. We offer special education programs. Our Deaf and Hard-A-Hearing Program is actually housed in Newton Public Schools, so any student who attends, it's at Newton North. So any student that actually attends our Deaf and Hard-A-Hearing Program in Newton North will actually receive a diploma from Newton North, not their own district unless otherwise specified at the agreement. But that services currently, we service students that are in grade six through 12, but we're looking into expanding that into the elementary level. We're just not sure how we want to expand that yet. We have to do a needs assessment for our member districts to see. We also have a, our Partners Program is students with high-functioning autism, and some of the students actually, part of their day, they are transitioning into Bedford High School because we're housed in Bedford, so they can actually go and spend part of their day in Bedford High School. We also have a student that's, part of his day is actually in Concord-Carlisle High School, but the remainder of the time is at the Partners Program. Our North Crossing Academy and 45-Day Assessment is for students with social, emotional disabilities. And we have a new program that's called our A-B-C-D Program, and it's the Academy for Behaviors and Character and Development Program. And that unfortunately is for students that are being suspended in school due to substance abuse. And so it's a shortened day, it's also an interim alternative educational setting, so they start off, it's a minimum of five days, but no more than 45 days. And the idea is that we actually are bringing students in, getting them some wraparound services, providing them with counseling on top of the tutoring, tutoring and the academic needs that they have, and then they will go back into the school. And then we also work with the, the sending school district to make sure they have the supports that they need so that they feel that they can support the student to, to further continue their education in their school. So the idea of this is to get them back into the school, but with more supports than what they had when they left. And then also, we have a new program that's for 18 to 22 stu, ages 18 to 22, and it's our Academy for Career Pathways, and that has been going really well. We were able to get that program up and running because we just received a $298,000 grant from the governor through the Workforce Skills Grant. And we have students who are able to work on certifications in the area of CAD and 3D printing. They also have a culinary program. In February 1st, we're going to be starting our Certified Nursing Assistant Program for our Health Sciences. And then we have a dual enrollment, so they may attend Middlesex Community College or a part-time. And then our fifth tract on that program is to go directly into the career force. And so how can we help them with the workforce? And so how can we help them with the workforce and getting them jobs and internships and practice that way? Students who attend that program, they have to have passed at least two out of the three MCAS, and so they are more of a higher functioning students. That's a different transitions than what you see mostly in other areas, it's usually a life skills transitions program. So this is really for that other group of students in special needs that have not been able to maybe get a diploma for various reasons, maybe they need an additional transition year, but we provide those types of supports. So it's been really cute watching the students bring me either a cookie that they make, so I'm probably going to, you know, gain my weight pretty quickly because they want to have me try it, or they, I have all neat little gadgets. Right now, I have a cellphone holder, I just was given salt and pepper shakers that they're all making with their 3D printers and everything going on. So it's been cute to watch the work in progress that they're doing. We also have contracted programs. So for 40 years now, we've contracted a Boston Public Schools and a youth alternative program, servicing students that are at risk. And then we have, if you've heard of the Special Education Surrogate Parent Program, that's actually through Edco, so we service all of the state of Massachusetts for the Special Education Surrogate Parent Program. That's actually housed in Westboro. And then Massachusetts Migrant Education Program. So again, we're for the entire state of Massachusetts. If we have migrant students, we actually have some services that we can provide to help support schools and for the families. We have an office in Springfield, we have New Bedford, and we have in Bedford as well. And then in Rantham, there's the Rantham Rehabilitation Center. And that program is actually for adults with special needs that require residency and they require long-term care. And so our population is going down, the numbers are going down there in that program as they're aging out and then, but the services and the needs we're seeing are really increasing. So that's actually in partnership with DDS as well. So we do a lot of partnerships with the Department of Education in our contracted services as well as other rehabilitation services and DDS. We also have our Professional Development Learning Center. It's called the McSweeney Center. And I won't go into details with all of that, but we have a lot of professional development opportunities of which ActinBoxPro is able to participate in and have participated in. And then we have an Ideas Program and that's called our Initiatives for Developing Equity and Achievement for Students. For that time, we actually provide workshops, sometimes for districts. We also have recently, in a couple of districts, we've had consulting to parent groups and to help parents with understanding equity and diversity. And then we have conferences. Every year, we have a conference, last year we had Zaretta Hammond and it's held at Bentley University. So we keep it small, we have no more than 300 people. Last year, we actually had a waiting list because it was sold out, so that's great. And then we have anybody who's a new school committee member and you need your new school committee orientation, we do that every year as well. We provide trainings, usually we get requests from districts that they have new school committee members and we need to do our orientation. We provide that usually on a Saturday, a full day at Edco Collaborative. So I think, Adam, you did that last year, right? Yeah, I thought so. So we have that. We've also just recently partnered with William James College. We have some interns that are getting their doctorate level degrees in counseling and so they're interning over at our programs this year. And we've also, just this year, we've partnered with Teachers 21 for our Experienced Special Education Directors Institute, also partnering with the Department of Education. So that's a full year, we're providing programs and coursework on Saturdays. But in addition this year, I have also reached out to different districts such as Palmer Public Schools, Gloucester Public Schools, and I also have been working with SEC Collaborative on their institute and providing trainings and opportunities in those districts and any trainings that the collaborative is offering. We're trying to work together with different collaboratives as well. We currently have 26 roundtables and I think ActinBoxPro is, gets a star for the amount of roundtables that everybody actually participates in. I don't know if there's a roundtable that ActinBoxPro doesn't participate in, so that's wonderful to see, including school committee roundtables. So please, if you're interested in that, please let us know, we'd love to get you all on the list. I think some of you have actually participated in that. We have two new roundtables that we're starting this year. One is for out-of-district coordinators or educational team leaders and also for transition specialists as well. So we've finally, we've gotten some interest in those two areas, so we decided to expand. Roundtables are only offered to people who are members, to districts who are members of Edco. So we have had some people who have no longer become a member of Edco, but they found the roundtables really effective and they asked to come in, but we've actually turned them down because if you're not a member, it's a service that we provide to our members only. We also have an Educational Leadership Institute that has been running since, I think it was either 1992 or 1997, but we've had over 300 graduates since 2003 and more than 70 graduates are in leadership roles within Edco districts and nearly 150 graduates are in leadership roles outside of Edco. But it's an 18-month, part-time program that people have been able to participate in and we just got a review and it was a great review from the Department of Education with that program as well. We have 16 board members that are voting members and we have 12 advisory members, they're non-voting members. We have an executive finance committee, which is a subcommittee that actually makes recommendations to the full board. Our board responsibility is very similar to school committee responsibilities, is the financial, the accountability, and then the oversight, you know, which all is very similar. And then our collaboratives, we have been working with grants, we've been developing new proposals for new grants and trying to work on those. We have curriculum that we are able to provide some support, consultation, home-based services, research, or any types of partnering that we can find with the Department of Education as well. So this year is, will be our third year that Russell Johnston, who's the Deputy Superintendent of Special Education, I mean Deputy Commissioner of Special Education from the Department of Education, he has his regional meetings for greater Boston area housed at Edco because we do have the Zoom capacity in our organization. And so we are able, for example, on October 25th is when we're having our first regional meeting with the Deputy Commissioner this year. And we have 70 people that have signed up to be in-house and we have over 78, I think, or 80 at this point, that have signed up to also be on the Zoom capacity. So in that meeting, we have a minimum of 150 people that will be in attendance on that one day. So we work very closely with Desi on that. In regards to what does Edco Collaborative, what is the cost for you to be a member? Back in 2017, it was a $30,000, well, $29,409. They have cut the assessment costs down to nearly 53% over the last few years. And this year for ActinBoxPro, it's $14,015. So it's been cut extremely through the years by doing some restructuring. What does this, what does this give you for a value? You have professional development savings, so anybody who's a member, you get a 20% discount on all of the professional development offerings. Just last year alone, you had more than 60 ActinBoxPro participants in our FY19, which is actually approximately about 3% of all of our PD, has been, including ActinBoxPro employees. Also, the, there's tuition, so if you have anybody that comes into our, in our tuition, it's also a 20% discount on tuition. In some cases, if you have two students, it's more than saving you, more than your assessment costs. So, and we also have special education roundtables. Again, all that PD that happens, some happen four times a year, some six, some eight, some even 10 times, some every month, so some are a lot more progressive on what they can do. And so I think that's trying to give all of it to you in a very short period of time without overwhelming, although I probably did. But we do have a lot happening at Edco, we're very excited about all the different work. And I do feel we're moving at a very, very quick pace, but a positive pace at this time. So I'd love any questions.
I'm tempted to say, really, is that all you do? Oh my God. I've always been very impressed with the collaboratives and the, just the breadth of work and the creative things that they're doing, and Edco in particular.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you that the school committee roundtables was really the only source of professional development that I could find when I first joined school committee five years ago. And it was, it has been absolutely invaluable to sit with other school committee members and the facilitators just to, just to learn the myriad things that you were exposed to when you sat at this table. I really do appreciate that, I hope they continue.
That's great. And I have to say, Tom Markham, who facilitates and coordinates those meetings, he's also, not only is he our business manager, but he is also a school committee member for Wakefield Public Schools. So he understands firsthand what some of the challenges are that you're going through as a school committee member as well. So I think he does a great, great job with that.
Yeah, I also benefit from the Edco Collaborative a lot. I actually have a question for the, so other than the school committee collaboration that we attended, do we, does our special ed or any other committee or from the school district attend the Edco on a regular basis? I'm just curious, because they have so much resources, I'm just curious if other committee joined the Edco on a regular basis? Do you know?
So in regards to anybody from, from ActinBoxPro, so we have English Language Arts, like all of our roundtables, our 26 roundtables, they actively participate from ActinBoxPro and I think they bring back a lot of, a lot of work. And I'm not sure, Dawn or Deb, I think Deb, you were working with the assistant, the PAL group, right? The, right, last year? And what they worked on is, how do you give the report to the school committee on, when it came to the MCAS work?
To the new accountability, right. So we were able to collaborate all together on the new accountability system from the state and really understand it, unpack it together and create a slide deck from which we could all pull from so that we could make presentations to our school committee. So it was really invaluable to have colleagues from other districts to work together. And I was actually at Edco this morning for my PAC group and again, just invaluable resources.
So we do, we do have your department heads and so forth that are actively involved as well.
I'll add, I am too.
Yeah, oh, all the time.
I attend the superintendent's roundtables all the time, so great resources.
Yep, and one of our better attendees for our board meetings too, I will say. So it's great to have ActinBoxPro as part of our group.
In terms of your work with students, you talked about having different goals for different students. Some students might have independent living goals, other students might have trade goals. And I was curious, you know, how you went about setting expectations and goals for students and related to that, how you managed to student stress?
Sometimes we have to deal with our own stress, right? So, but no, actually, we have in each program, we have program directors and we have counselors and transition specialists, so they all work as a team with their sending school districts as well. So the students are involved, I can give you one example, I had a student and I wish he was sitting here with me tonight because he's just a great story for me. He, he's 19 years old and he advocates for himself, which is just amazing to see. And he came to us from another, he was in a private school last year and over the summer, he came in to join us. And we thought we were just going to have him for the summer. And he looked at me and he said, they all call me Nadine, they don't call me Dr. Exstrom or Ms. Exstrom, it's just all Nadine, we're just all first name basis. And he said to me, he said, you know Nadine, he said, I want to be in that 18 to 22 program, when's it going to start? And I said to him, well, we're going to get it to start at the beginning of the year and at the beginning of the school year. And he said, good, because, he says, this is the first time, he said, I'm 19, and he said, this is the first time that I feel I'm part of a family and I feel like I'm at a school where somebody cares. And so we really spend time with each of those students and really listen to who they, it doesn't matter what role you are, we're business manager, if we're in the central office, we have students in our program and we really sit and listen to them. We try to work with the parents as much as possible, but obviously also with the school system. So how does that, you know, I think your question is, how do we work with that? It's really very individualized. We have community meetings at the end of each day with our students and let them work in their own advocacy groups, advisory groups, and talk about what their stress is and what they're liking and not liking. Interestingly enough, the students decided yesterday that they didn't like the fact that they, we collect their cellphones. And so they decided, very creatively, they decided yesterday about third period that they wanted to picket and they were going to protest outside. So very clever. And so I got a call and I said, they said, I was on my way in and they said, Nadine, don't be shocked when you see the students sitting on the front lawn, okay? And so they told me. So at the end of the day, we let them, you know, say their piece, but at the end of the day, when we had community meeting, I actually sat with them and talked to them about policies and protocols and appropriate actions and so forth. So we all are invested in how we can help the students learn and to help them exercise their voice and advocate, but what's the right paths and work ways of doing that? Because we do want to teach them about being independent and what, you know, and how it's important to be able to express what they're feeling. So, you know, collaboratives have a much different, especially ours being so small, I think that's the beauty of, we're big in that way, our big organization doing many different things, but our programs themselves are so small that, you know, sometimes students will come onto the, onto my side instead of the school's side and I like to sit with them and just say, how's it going? Or maybe they earn a lunch and be able to have a lunch with me and I can kind of hear, you know, how's their engine running kind of thing. So yeah, we work a lot of different ways. There's no one answer to your question, I think. There's many different facets and you have to work with wherever the child's at at that time.
Nadine, thank you. I've always known of the richness of the offerings that Edco has had, but I think this is the first I've heard someone actually come to talk about the program.
Thank you.
So I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
The thing that I'm a little curious about is the A B C D Program.
Yes.
When did that start and can you tell me a little bit more about the enrollment and how that's progressing?
Sure. So actually, I have flyers on all of this, so I will just give it all to Beth and she can send it to all of you, so you'll have it. But the A B C D Program, the reason why that actually started as well as the 18 to 22 Career Pathways Program is last year was my first year at Edco. So I went around to every district that was a member and talked to them about where do you see your needs, how can Edco better support you, what do you need for your district, how can we? And this overwhelmingly, the A B C D Academic Behavior and Character Development Program overwhelmingly became a need, unfortunately for as, even as young as sixth grade, we're seeing students with substance abuse. And so I started to try to understand more about it and actually, Marion Ryan, our district attorney for North Middlesex, she did a presentation last February. And I actually went at Metro West in Framingham and I actually went and listened to that. She's on a, on the task force and I went to this task force and listened to what different organizations were doing. And I started to pull more information and then we started to do more research on what we could do with this. This is a program that, and then I met with the Department of Education to tell them, this is really where I want to go. And they say, of course, substance abuse is not a disability. And I said, right, but anxiety and depression, all of that can, and those factors obviously can, can assist. And I just went on and on, you know, with why I feel this is just a really important program to have. So the way that they explained it is that because it's an interim alternative educational setting, that it would be okay to be able to provide and be considering more of those wraparound services and so forth. So the other piece that we had to look at is, how do we run this program that's cost-efficient but also is helping districts to meet the needs? So a student, when they're being suspended, whether they're a regular ed student or a special education student, they require tutoring. But we know that students with substance abuse, tutoring is going to give them the academic piece, but nothing like that is going to give them the counseling support. So then I reached out to the Children's Hospital in Framingham and Waltham and the Lahey Clinic, the Emerson Hospital, as well as Samaritans and advocates. And they all have given me letters of support for this program and that they would help us with these wraparound services that we should, should we need them. So what we have done is, the program starts at 10:00 a.m. and goes to 1:30 p.m. Now, the reason why you do that, it's three and a half hours and if a student is in school for three hours in a day, it counts as a school day. So they could be suspended, but we could be looking at it as not a suspension, but as an alternative educational setting. And the reason why we started at 10 is some districts, and I don't know about ActinBoxPro, what your transportation is like. and I don't know about Acton, Boxborough, what your transportation is like or what you offer, but some districts either have their own transportation vehicles, or they have an agreement with their transportation service. It doesn't matter if you do one run or 10 runs in a day, it's a cost of the day. So, because of that, if we did it 10 o'clock in the morning, we figured that way there, the buses could drop off the students in the regular school setting, be able to pick up the students and bring them to EDco. And then if it's done at 1:30, they'd be back in time for the afternoon run. So, there would be no additional cost for transportation. The cost for member districts such as Acton, Boxborough is $160 a day with a minimum of five days, because we figured minimum of five days, we, we don't know if this is a first offense for a student, or if this is a second or a third, but it will help us to at least get some systems and supports in place. If it's a longer placement, then it also allows us to have counseling to be able to come in and work with the students there. This is such a new program, we're just still just getting it off and running. We currently have a school psychologist on staff, as well as counseling staff, as well as transition staff that are in our other programs, that when we start to have students that can be enrolled into this program, we have the staff, and we have licensed certified educators, regular ed and special ed content, and, and special education staff that will also be providing the tutoring. The tutoring we have, could be provided by the school district, where the school district says, "You know what? It's only five days. This is what they're gonna be working on, what they're gonna be missing, and we can use the school districts." Or if it's a longer, we're actually using more of a, a recovery curriculum program. I hope that answers your questions. Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Ekstrom, for giving us such a great overview of what you do. I think it definitely gave us so much more information about things when we see EDco collaborative or whatever on there.
Thank you for inviting me, and anytime, I, I love to be able to come out. It's, it's a, it's an honor for me to be asked to come here tonight. So, thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine.
All right. So, item 3.3 is, we have Joe Gibbowitz with us tonight to talk to us and prevent, present an overview of our early childhood program, and discuss the implications of the building project on the educational program of the school. So...
So, again, as we're queuing this up, I thought this is an opportunity, I, I think, you know, since the committee has changed membership over the last few years, I don't think that Joe has had an opportunity to come and talk about what the preschool does. But we're hoping to give you a little background, all, information on why our preschool exists, the students it serves, and some updates about what's been going on, but also talk a little bit about the implications of the building project for programming at the preschool. We thought that a timely presentation for you.
Well, you already did my introduction, so, thank you, Peter. No, that's okay. No, thank you though, for having me here tonight. As Peter said, I haven't, there's, there's some of you I know in, in the committee, but not all of you. So, I'm happy to talk about the program tonight, talk about who we are, what we do, and then as Peter and Tessa said too, the implications of a new school, the new school building project, and, and how that could impact the early childhood program. So, the Carol Heebner Early Childhood Program is an integrated learning environment for preschool-aged children. So, students with identified special education needs, and those developing typically, learn and play together, meeting IDEA regulations to educate children in the least restrictive environment. So, the integrated preschool, which is one of the big components of our program, is a special education program, and the lead teachers in each class are special educators. Students with special needs are placed in the program, following initial special education evaluations, and enroll when they turn three, or if they're identified with a disability, throughout the school year. Students developing typically, they serve as role models in the program, and are enrolled by their parents at the beginning of the school year. Parents of children without special needs choose us as they would any other preschool in town. Classrooms generally have up to 15 students, eight students, eight students developing typically, and up to seven students with special needs that require specialized special education programming. Beyond the integrated preschool program, which I said is a big part of what we do, we also do provide evaluations, screenings, pre-referral services and support. So, the early childhood staff works in collaboration with pediatricians, parents, other agencies that support early childhood programming, and area preschools as well, to provide evaluations, observations, screenings, and consultation. So, we do this for all, for students in Acton and Boxborough. We also work very closely with early intervention. Many of the students referred for initial evaluations come to us, or are referred from early intervention. We have a strong working relationship with early intervention, and the transition process for students with suspected disabilities may start as soon as two and a half years. So, they're two years, six months. As soon as a student turns three and is eligible for special education following an initial evaluation, they may be placed in the program, or their services would be initiated. So, our program philosophy, we, we strongly believe that all children can be successful. They can all learn and develop. It may be at their own unique pace, but they can all learn and develop. And they learn and develop through active exploration of their environment. They also learn through interaction with peers and adults, and they need, need a nurturing and predictable environment in which to grow and learn. We believe children learn best in an inclusive, child-centered, and developmentally appropriate environment, and the role of the adults in the program is to support and facilitate each child's learning. Play is really the foundation of a child's learning and development, and that's a big focus of what we do, that as lo, as well as fostering social emotional development. The curriculum in the integrated preschool is developmentally based, it's child-directed, and aligned with Massachusetts Early Childhood Learning Standards. Much of our focus, as I said, is on play and social emotional learning. And we, we reinforce working and playing together, social interactions, and provide act, uh, group activities to practice these skills. The curriculum encourages the growth of each child at his or her own individual pace. While social emotional learning is a big focus of our work, the program also works to support early literacy development for the district's youngest learners. Little free libraries were established at each site last year, at, so, at both early childhood locations. The goal of these little free libraries is to build community, spark creativity, and inspire love of literacy through increased access to high-quality and developmentally appropriate books. We've also continued our collaboration with Dr. Joan Kelly, who's an educational researcher and developer of Abound Parenting, which was formerly known as the Parent Uptake Project, or PUP, which helps to support our students' early literacy skills. So, Abound Parenting, it's an app that's designed to build crucial early language, literacy, and critical thinking skills through enjoyable parent and child conversations. So, it's not an app for the child to do, but more, it's things that are sent to the parents as ideas on how to foster those skills. So, we're currently the only public school system in the US that's, that's been involved in this beta testing of the resource. So, Joan Kelly has made this a resource free to the preschool families and staff in Acton, Boxborough. We've invited all pre-K families to participate in the Abound Parenting Program, which provides families with age-appropriate ideas to help their child's early literacy skills and social emotional learning skills as well. I just added a little picture here, too. This slide actually needs a clarification from me on my end. So, the Acton site actually has six classrooms, but it does have eight sections. So, six integrated sections and two specialized classrooms. That's, that's how I made a mistake with that. So, we, the program itself, the Carol Heebner Early Childhood Program, has eight classrooms across two sites, so the Acton site and the Boxborough site, as well as parent drive-in and drop-off itinerant services for students requiring those special education-related services. Half-day and full-day integrated services are provided across six of the classrooms. So, there's nine sections of integrated sections, three full-day sections, and six half-day sections. And the integrated classrooms meet four days per week. The program also has two classrooms that provide specialized instruction for students who require individual or small-group support using the principles and teaching methodology of Applied Behavior Analysis, or ABA. Given this format, the students' needs, the students' needs, and the direct instruction generally occurs one-to-one or two-to-one. Children in the preschool ABA classrooms require small-group instruction and/or discreet trials, but most students spend a portion of each day participating in an integrated preschool class in order to foster social growth. I wanna continue to talk a little bit about the locations. So, six of the eight preschool classrooms are currently housed in this building, in the administration building in Acton, which was built in 1957. So, the building is shared with the district's administrative offices and the community education program. The district capital improvement plan and master planning that was completed in 2016, 2017 determined that the preschool in the, in the administration building was in significant need of relocation. The current Acton site space was not designed for preschool-age group or that type of program, and has been retrofitted over the years to attempt to meet the needs of preschool-aged children. So, the preschool bathrooms and several rooms in the administration building where students receive either speech and language or motor therapy are not fully accessible for students with physical disabilities. So, to access some of these rooms, staff and children would need to walk through other therapy spaces or meeting rooms such as this one. The playground is located in the middle of a parking circle, and nursing is also not available in the administration building, and children must be accompanied to the building next door to see the nurse. The Boxborough site, the other two preschool classrooms are housed at the Blanchard Memorial School in Boxborough. Those classrooms at Blanchard do have a nurse on site. And the playground at the Blanchard Memorial School is an enclosed and safe location, however, it's not accessible for students with physical disabilities. While related services, while related service staff, the OT, PT, or speech and language therapist, have more accessible therapy spaces than the Acton site, they're really not located in close proximity to the classrooms. So, when services are not provided in the classroom, the therapists may spend a lot of time bringing children from one location to the other. So, beyond addressing the current building's deficiencies for the preschool program, the new school building project is an exciting opportunity, I believe, to bring the entire Carol Heebner Early Childhood Program to one location. So, the, I, there's a lot of efficiencies, I think, that could, that we could benefit from merging both sites into one location, which would be coordination of student programming and services, reducing travel between locations for staff, increase staff collaboration for the preschool and early childhood staff, and sharing resources and educational materials as well. So, I, I just wanted to say, having the Carol Heebner Early Childhood Program in the new, new school building would enable the program to be accessible and also inclusive. It's important for the classrooms, therapy rooms, and playground to be accessible to young children of all abilities, and I'm really looking forward to that opportunity.
Thank you, Joe. That was very enlightening. Does anyone have questions? Adam?
Joe, I have a series of questions for you, shortened to the point. If there's a student who receives preschool program services at the Blanchard site who qualifies for extended school year programming, where do they end up going for the summer?
Currently, we have one location for extended school year programming, and it would be in, currently, it's been at the administration building over the last several years of being a regionalized program.
They have to transition for the summer from one site to another.
Yes.
So, I would say not necessarily, actually, because with the opening of a new school, I think it provides us with opportunities, particularly, air conditioning is one of the big barriers for us, which is why we use the twin school. And so, we anticipate really considering the, the new building site as an ESY.
Yeah, I'm, I'm mostly asking questions to further highlight some of the deficiencies of this building, and to advocate in favor of joining the schools into one. So, my second question would be, are there any facilities in this building to provide for lunches for any students who might qualify for a free and reduced lunch?
Uh, no.
And are there any facilities, regular support staff facilities in this building that would support specials for students to get extra enrichment in art, music, physical education?
Uh, that could be another benefit of going to the new school.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, is the, you mentioned the Abound Parenting, it's an app, right? Is it?
The Abound App?
Yeah, yeah. It's an app, right?
Tell me again.
It's an application, right?
It's an app, yes.
It's a, it's a, it's like, you know, the cell phone.
It's an application for the phone or for the computer, yep.
Cell phone, right? Are we paying the license fee?
No. No, it's a, we're, because we've been part of the beta test to, to trial this out. It's actually free for Acton, Boxborough Regional School District teachers, as well as the parents enrolled in the, uh, excuse me, as well as the children enrolled in the program.
But this is a beta version, right? So, going forward, as soon as the beta version is down, then are we going to pay the license?
No, we are not.
Okay. All right. So, the second thing is that, this is, we are going to, we have this new building, and then we're going to combine the two locations to one location, right, to the new, to the new building, right?
Yes, that's what the district has put forth in the education plan, yes.
Right. So, I, I, you know, I think, we think probably this is a, you know, the best solution, or best, I would say, convenient thing for the students, because, you know, like, you know, the therapy location and the classroom, right, they can, you know, they can move pretty, you know, easily from one location to another location inside the class, inside the building, right? So, but, are we, did we do any survey among the students and their parents? To bring, in order to bring, I, I, so, we plan to combine two locations to one locations, right? We think this is the best for, best interest for the students and their families. Did we do the survey among the students and the parents?
So, we actually, no, we did not do a survey. But what we did do, Mary Brolin, who's the chair of the building committee, and I actually hosted a forum for the preschool parents at Blanchard, where we actually presented an overview of the building project, very clear that the intent is to merge that into the Douglas Gates Project, answered questions, provided that opportunity. But it's not necessarily a survey. I think one of the other reasons we're doing that is, the Blanchard classrooms are at capacity, and if we're going to continue to offer priority to Boxborough families to enroll at Blanchard, we need to free up the classroom space to expand the, the K through six program as well. So, it's actually meeting a variety of needs by combining this. But we hosted the forum for the intent of giving people an opportunity to come in, ask questions, provide feedback.
Oh, can we, can we do a survey? I want to see the survey results later on, 'cause, you know, the forum is just, you know, you give the information, and you answer the questions, but, you know, survey is going to show the results, how many parents, how many kids, they really, you know, prefer this one location instead of two locations, 'cause we are...
Michael.
Yeah.
Preschool is two years. The children that are in preschool now will not be attending preschool at the new building. So, there'll, there'll be like one overlapping year. So, I, I understand what you're saying 100%, but there's so many layers to this in terms of the other benefits of, of a preschool. It's one preschool program in two, in two locations. It's not like, it, it's always been...
So, Michael, I apologize, 'cause I was just checking with Diane to refresh my memory. I actually think this committee voted that as final last year. So, I, I don't know if we would reopen that discussion. I think we had to vote that as a piece of the building project, submitted to MSBA. I think we had to vote that as a piece of the building project, submitted to MSBA. I'm pretty sure, and I don't know if Beth, if you remember that, I am almost positive we voted that last year.
By one case?
Yeah.
I just was wondering, how do you, if you, whether you get more applicants for typically developing preschoolers than you have spaces?
I would say each year we do for our all-day classes. And it does depend year to year, depending on what families each year are interested in or looking for for early childhood programming. So some, most years, though, I would say, and this is my seventh year here, that I would say we typically have more applicants for all-day seats than we have capacity for.
And how do you select the families?
It's through a lottery.
Okay. And are you, is, what is the fee structure for typically developing preschoolers?
Currently, it's $7,070 for a year for all-day, which is eight thirty to three, four days a week, follows the school calendar, and a half-day would be $3,650, so $3,650.
For an entire year.
For a half-day, for an entire year, yes. So $707 for a full day per month and $365 for a half-day per month.
So it's significantly less expensive than private preschool?
Yep. It does fall relatively in line with some of the preschools, but I would still say it's, yes, it's a lower cost, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I have the same question as Jenny just asked. What is the kind of enrollment trend? Is it always, is getting more, you know, more competitive every year in terms of lottery? Are we, in the past, like, three to five years? And also for the new building, I have the same question, which is the capacity, are we keeping the same capacity as we currently have?
So one thing, one big thing to keep in mind about regular education seats, so this is a specialized special education program that we're mandated to provide that type of programming in the public schools. That's why the preschool exists in the public school, anyway. So we have to, our philosophy is an integrated philosophy, so that all children of all abilities, children with special needs and those developing typically can learn side-by-side. We think that's really important. But we have to look at seats based on pretty much special education referrals and kind of, and that enrollment to then make the basis for how many seats for regular education students we would have. So that's sort of, not really the answer to one of your questions, but I'll try to answer. I would say that maybe the last couple of years, I would say, the all-day seats, we have more applications than we did maybe in my first three years. I can't give you an exact number right now, but I would say that that's my instinct to reply that way.
I really appreciate the fact that the program is play-based and sort of child inquiry-driven, and I think that's really refreshing to see when there's so many preschools that are really heavily academic at this point. And I did take a look at the Abound program and thought it was really interesting. I had a couple of questions about it. One of them was, when you said it's being offered to all of the students, did you mean all pre-K students in AB or just the ones that are in your program?
Just the ones who are district enrolled, who are enrolled in the district. But we are expanding our work with Joan, too, to also do some work in kindergarten as well. And some of the students who had been in preschool and who had done this and who have already matriculated have been able to continue. Abound itself is new, but it's carrying over the premise of what POP was, which is the Parent Uptake Project.
When I looked at it, I thought it was really interesting with the literacy focus and the way it's engaging parents with their children in different aspects of literacy. And I was wondering if you know if there is any leaning toward including more early sort of dyslexia-type screening in the Abound program? I'm not sure if you're aware of that, if that's something that they're looking at developing?
Not within the Abound program. It's really about setting up conversations between their child, the, setting up, giving ideas on how to have meaningful conversations, providing activities to do to help support early literacy.
Okay. So in terms of the evaluations that you also offer as part of your program, that's separate from what you're doing with the Abound literacy program?
Yes, that's correct.
And have you gotten any initial feedback from parents about the Abound program?
Well, they really just have launched under the new Abound just a couple of weeks ago. We've had a couple of parent ambassadors who were part of the Parent Uptake Project, so the first two years of the beta test, who've come back and spoken to some of the parents when we've had Joan Kelly come out and do a presentation to the preschool families on what this is and why we're doing it. And so we've had some positive feedback from that.
Can I ask another question? Okay, yes. Okay. So then I also was thinking about, had a couple of questions about the new building project, and you said that currently the sort of ratio of IEP students to typically developing is about 50%. Is that by preference or is that by space? Were you hoping that would?
By space.
Okay.
So, and by regulation. So when, to have an integrated class, it really, you need to have more than 50% students not on IEPs. So 15 is a way to, I don't want to say maximize a number, but you could have eight, you could have up to seven students on IEPs and eight children developing typically, so.
And with the new building project, would the enrollment numbers change? Is there more space there than we currently have?
We currently have one extra classroom that's recommended in the education program for the new school building project.
Okay. So one additional classroom.
Than we currently have, yes.
Than we currently have. Great. Thank you.
Back on what you said, Nora. So Joe, you are, I think, in a very unique position in a very exciting time to impact the trajectory of a child's literacy development in a really positive way, because you're coming in like, you know, on the front end where it should be. And I understand that the most important thing a parent can do with a preschooler is read aloud to them and talk to them and make sure they're exposed to books and that they're seeing their peers and adults around them reading. And so I think these are exciting times. I know that we're in the beginning of a, you know, very large-scale kind of revamp of K through three. The governor, almost a year ago, on October 19, 2018, signed the Act Regarding Students with Dyslexia, relative to students with dyslexia, that's not the exact wording, which in part launched an amendment to MGL 2, I think it's 287, Chapter 287. And there are three big pieces. One is the family partnership, and I think Abound does a great job creating the beginnings of a family partnership with the school system in building capacity at home to enhance literacy so that they're school-ready by kindergarten. The other two pieces, and this is my question, the other kind of two big areas are professional development and the assessment and the screening tool. So you kind of spoke to the screening tool, but I was just wondering, like, big picture, what you see the future is in those three areas at the preschool level for getting children kind of up to speed with literacy before kindergarten? Sorry for the long-winded question.
I mean, currently, there isn't any screening tool for children that age, for preschool-age children, but I would not be surprised down the line if there is something that, you know, gets developed. I do think the relationship between the preschool teachers and the parent to help support, I am agreeing with you, I think that's the relationship between the parent and the preschool teacher and teachers in general, as they, children continue to get older, is an important one, to try to be on the same page and to help support child's learning, whether it's in literacy or social-emotional learning or whatnot.
Can I just jump in real quick? I just wanted to mention that as part of the literacy visioning that we are doing, pre-K is part of that work. So we do have representation from pre-K, so as we are looking at tools, as we are looking at professional development, pre-K is going to be right alongside us doing that work.
I can add one more thing, too. Deb, thanks for getting me to think about something. Just, we work with Sharon Ryan, who's the district's literacy specialist as well, so she does work with my early childhood teachers as well.
Hold on one second, Don. I also can say, I downloaded the Abound app because I wanted to see, and I put in leading information that I know my own personal children couldn't answer, and the app does, like, tell you, these are risk factors for dyslexia, you should talk to your pediatrician, you might want to bring this up, like, that conversation is part of the thing. So, anyway, go ahead, John.
Thank you. I appreciated your statement that play is foundational. For those who can remember the beginning of this meeting, we sang at the beginning. I would hope that the idea that play is foundational was not restricted to pre-K and school committee meetings. I also wanted to, and Tessa asked me if that was important, and I think that that is actually extremely important. You know, I think that sometimes people get a little overly serious and lose sight of what is actually important and what will work in an educational context. Secondly, I wanted to affirm what everybody already at this table, I think, believes, which is that early interventions are a wonderful thing. My son attended the integrated preschool many years ago, and his experience is, in fact, aligned with that general understanding that early intervention is very important. And then the last thing that I wanted to do was ask a question with respect to whether or not the curriculum of pre-K would change as a function of the district moving from its current model of half-day K and full-day K to an all-day K model.
You're asking if the curriculum would change?
Well, if you knew where those kids were going, and they were all going to all-day K instead of some other mix of things, would you do anything different?
I think we need to meet the children where they're at and keep our work child-centered and developmentally appropriate. So Nora had mentioned earlier that she was, she appreciated that we, that I spoke about play. There are some families who will come and visit the program and choose not to send their child here because it is more play-based and focused on social-emotional development and learning than the academics. So I think our program philosophy and what the staff have done and delivered for such a long time would have to shift drastically to not continue to provide play and social-emotional learning as a foundation for what we do and really the right thing to do for young children.
Thank you so much, Joe, for answering all the questions and for giving us such a great overview.
Thanks for having me.
So our last presentation is, Deb and Don are here to present an overview of the key data themes from the Challenge Success and Homework surveys that the district administered last spring. Their presentation is going to focus on district-level data. So school-level data has been provided to principals, and each principal will work with school-based teams to analyze the data and develop school-specific action plans. Principals are going to submit a brief report and action plan to the district in early winter, and a copy of the aggregate plan will be made available to the school committee then. So I know there were some questions around that, but just to ready you for what they're actually going to present. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you. That was actually like my introduction. I borrowed and copied and pasted some of that text around what's coming next. So you already gave a preview. Thank you. So tonight, we want to share a little bit of the information that we have around the surveys that were administered. We administered seven surveys last spring, so the data is sort of pulled from a variety of sources. Challenge Success looked at students and parent input this year from grades six through 12. The parent survey was new this year, so there's not any baseline data for that particular piece. And then this year, working in conjunction with WestEd, who we were already working with through some of our data inquiry teamwork, we developed some surveys for parents, students, and teachers as well. The teachers, that's also new. So sort of looking at all of the different data sources, and as Peter shared in an earlier update, and Tessa just shared as well, you'll be hearing more about that in early winter. So as Deb and I look back, we think it was the spring of 2017 that we last sort of came and did a formal presentation, so certainly a number of school committee members are new, and we thought it would be good to refresh your memory just about what Challenge Success is. So this is one of its co-founders, Denise Pope, speaking about that.
We design Challenge Success as a way to basically translate the research we know about best practices with school, curriculum, and parenting to teachers, administrators, parents, and youth. We call it Challenge Success because we're challenging this definition of success that starts with grades and GPA and test scores and saying, it's got to be more than that. It's got to be about more than that. They've got to buy in to more than that. So we're actually challenging the system. What do we mean by success? First and foremost, health, health, health and well-being, character, resilience, engagement with learning, being truly prepared for the 21st century.
So a little bit abrupt there at the end, but a really good overview. We also provided, for those of you who weren't here a few years ago when we gave out books, there were books on the table for you over there, so please feel free to grab one of the overloaded and under-prepared. We plan to highlight five areas for you tonight, and the first one is support in school. So in the last, I don't even know how long, like, year, they've created these one-minute video clips that sort of give a highlight of some of the chapters, so Deb and I have chosen a few tonight to share with you as we get into the next area. And so this one is about success or support in school and what students report.
The best climate for learning is really a climate of care. And what we mean by that is where everyone feels like they belong, where there are adults who have their backs, where they want to be there, they want to get along, they feel like they have friends, they're part of a bigger unit. We work with schools to do this in lots of different ways. You can specifically teach social and emotional skills. You can have advisory where teachers are with a small group of kids that they know deeply, and it's kind of hard to fall through the cracks when you're in an advisory every week with a teacher. Or you can have some practices like mindfulness and yoga to help lead to a more calm and caring environment where you're focusing on what really matters and you're centering and you're getting past that anxiety and performance pressure of school.
So we are really pleased with this particular dataset. We looked at students who felt that they had a trusted adult in school, and you can see from grades six through eight, we had an 8% jump, and for students in grade through 12, we had a 1% jump. The other question, there were a number of questions in the survey that related to teacher care and support that were rated on a Likert scale, with one being I strongly disagree and five being I strongly agree. And you can see that we also had some growth on these. It was a little bit smaller, but scale was a little bit different. The other piece that was interesting, they asked, they asked parents and students to sort of categorize, or they asked them three words, and then they categorized the words into a series of categories. And so in this case, it's so interesting to me that fun is first and then difficult or stressful is second, but, okay. So in 2019, for example, students in grades six through eight said that school was fun, it was difficult or stressful, it was caring and welcoming. And I think part of the interesting piece of our data is that we have sixth graders, which are in, you know, our elementary schools, and then we have seventh and eighth graders. And so I don't know what the other datasets look like from other districts, but I wonder if that isn't a piece of sort of our data. I don't know if our junior high students would rate fun as top, but maybe they do. I hope they do. And then again, students in grades nine through 12, difficult or stressful was the top one, competitive, which we hear a lot about. top one, competitive, which we hear a lot about. And you can see that sort of, the, the parents basically said pretty similar things, at least for the high school, as well as caring and welcoming, which is always one that we definitely want to see as we think about our school cultures and our climates. So, the next piece that we wanted to talk a little bit about is around stress, health, and sleep. And so, students rated the most common source of stress being homework and grades and workload, as well as grades and assessment, and things that we would expect for students who spend six hours a day, five days a week in a school setting. The interesting, there were a couple interesting shifts. One of them is around the extracurricular, which then took a backseat, for some reason, for grades six through eight and became workload and homework. But I love the procrastination or time management. It makes me wonder like whether we talked about that the week before or something in school, and that sort of rose to the top. But workload, homework, those sorts of things, and certainly college and, and college and future are, are going to be present in our surveys around nine through 12. Parents reported, so this was, this was interesting, too, to sort of look at the parent data versus the student data. So, 20% of our, our parents reported that their children are always or often stressed out about schoolwork, whereas, whereas 33% of students reported that. And for six through eight, and then grades nine through 12. So, just interesting differences in perceptions around how parents perceive stress and workload and how students perceive it as well. This is my favorite data piece, and it's really the data that I personally am most excited about because it really speaks to a decrease in the amount of health-related symptoms that students have reported, or they reported in April last year when they took this particular survey. So, you can see both from the grades nine through 12 and the sixth through eight, both groups have reported substantial declines in those health-related symptoms. And so, we're really hopeful that as a metric that we think about in terms of how are we doing around all the work we've done around social emotional supports, whether it's budgetary or programmatic, our family learning series, our ongoing messages to the community and the family around sleep, wellness, health, downtime, playtime, all of those things are hopefully contributing to this overall understanding of the importance of these things and that we can attribute it to perhaps those things. But we were really happy to see that. And finally, we get to, one of the areas that we have looked at a lot in the last four years, sleep. And I'm not sure there's another artist that has captured as many humorous moments as Bill Waterson with our two beloved Calvin and Hobbes around sleep in general. But sleep continues to be something we need to look at as families and to talk about a little bit more. So, we're excited to see that the NADL moved. We have 36 extra minutes on average of our sixth through eighth graders. Oh, no, we don't. These are parents versus students. So, this is hilarious. So, basically, sixth through eighth graders are, and their parents are sort of right online. But the students are getting another quarter hour of additional sleep, which, okay, will take the 15 minutes, but you can see that we're still only at slightly under 28% of our students who are getting that recommended amount of sleep. And we know that research is pretty clear about the impact of a lack of sleep on our bodies, on our well-being, on our mental health, on our relationships, our ability to handle stress and perform, all of those types of things. So, this will be an area that we'll continue to, to talk about. Probably, our school wellness committee will take another bite at it this year. That was a little sneak peek for you. And then, finally, nine through 12, unfortunately, only, not even 5% of our students are, are reporting that they receive the recommended number of sleep. And so, and, and this is actually very consistent with our 2018 YRBS sleep data, which indicated that students in grades six through 12 got an average of seven hours a night. So, there, those two data sources are aligned. And so, if I could make one public service announcement, it would be this. Cell phones do not belong in the bedrooms of teenagers and children. And so, if parents could all go to Kmart and buy a $10 alarm clock for their kids and get cell phones out of bedrooms, I think we would see a substantial decrease in some of the bullying that we pick up at school the next day, and some of the Snapchat incidents that we're dealing with, and some of the inappropriate pictures and things that are passing, getting passed between students in these hours when cell phones are being used in bedrooms in places where kids aren't supervised using them. Then, they can't be tempted to get drawn into Netflix, or Snapchat, or 50 other apps that were created this week that our students are using that we haven't even heard of yet. So, anyway, that's my one public service announcement, is that if we could do one thing, it would be to not have our kids have their cell phones in their bedroom. And I do wonder if that number would, would move a little bit more. So, on to you.
All right. So, the next highlighted area is student engagement. And we were excited to see, we've done, done some work in the district around engagement. And when we talk about student engagement, we do talk about it in these three areas, the behavioral engagement, cognitive engagement, and student affective engagement. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about what each one of those three types of engagement mean. So, when we talk about behavioral engagement, you can think about, you know, seeing students on task, paying attention when you go into a classroom. Sometimes you can ascertain sort of their persistence or their effort level. But that's what, when we talk about behavioral engagement, that's what we're looking for. Cognitive engagement is really around the depth to which students are learning something, if they're finding that their work is meaningful and purposeful. Oftentimes, when we're talking about learning, this is really the essence of what we're talking about because this is where disequilibrium has been created, or some productive discomfort, productive struggle occurs. That's where the brain starts firing. And so, that's really where, when we talk about rigor later, this is what we're talking about, the cognitive engagement. And then, the affective engagement, some other kinds of research, some researchers call this the emotional engagement. You can see that they're talking about emotional reactions and feelings that a student might have towards other students, towards the curriculum, the task at hand, or even the teacher. So, just keep in mind the three different types of engagement. So, now, we're looking at six through eight. Let's start with the second column from the left. Our six through eight, these are our student responses. And about 3.0, about 4%, 4% of students said they were disengaged. So, that means they were low in all three of those areas of engagement. Doing school, that's a challenge success term. And what that means is it's, students are high in behavioral engagement but low in both cognitive and the affective engagement. So, that they're doing school, they're paying attention, but maybe not having that depth of that cognitive engagement we talked about, or those feelings towards the learning. Purposefully engaged is when they're high in both behavioral and cognitive engagement, might be low, and then low in the affective. And then, fully engaged is when our students are fully engaged in all three areas. And then, back to that first column again, is sort of any other combination. So, for example, they might be high in affective but low in the other two. And so, you can see, these are our six through eight students, where we have, you know, about a third doing school, about a third purposefully engaged, and then only about 25% of our students are fully engaged in the learning. And then, nine through 12, for both categories, it really does decrease as our students get older. And so, their purposeful engagement and whether they're fully engaged decreases, and doing school actually increases from junior high or from sixth to eighth grade to high school. And then, on to our homework, which is our fourth category that we highlighted. We have another little video to share with you. Hi. Not my computer. Hang on. There you go. That obvious. Rigor versus load is a big confusion we see in schools. So, rigor is depth of understanding. It's mastering a subject matter. Load is the amount of work you assign. And the problem is, people confuse rigor with load. Kids, parents, teachers, sometimes, if I'm assigning a lot of work, or I've got to get through a lot of material, I must be a rigorous teacher. And it's actually not the case. You can cut your homework in half, as we've seen some AP teachers do, and still have that level of depth and rigor to have the kids understand and end up actually doing well. So, a kid does not have to do four hours of homework a night in order to be able to master the material, learn deeply, and pass the assessments. Okay. So, when we were thinking of some overarching questions for all the surveys, the overarching question we have is, does our, how well does our aggregate level data reflect our homework policy? And these are the same four questions that we've asked the principals to also report back on in January, so that we have the same questions at, at the school level that we can then roll up. The first question has to do with whether or not our students can complete their homework assignments independently. And so, what we did is we quoted from the policy underneath that section of the policy that reflects that question, what we're looking for. Questions two and three have to do with whether or not the degree to which the homework assignment supplements the instructional decisions back in the classroom. And the third question is whether or not the homework supports student engagement. So, those questions, two and three, when she talks about rigor, those are the kinds of things we were trying to get at, that cognitive engagement. And number four would really have to do with the load piece, right? So, how does the data suggest whether or not our homework assignments are aligned with our policy recommendations for frequency? So, how often, and then how much students, how much students, homework students are receiving? So, if we look at grades three through five, it's about 459 students responding, about 80% quite or, what do we have here? Yeah, about 80% is quite or very often can complete their homework assignments and have their materials in which to do so, grades three through five. And then, how easy is it for you to complete your homework by yourself without any help or support? Again, students finding it quite easy or very easy to complete their homework. When it comes to asking for an adult, am I one ahead of myself? Yeah. Thanks. There we go. That student, most of our students, about 80%, oh, closer to 90%, never or sometimes have to ask an adult to help them with their homework assignments. So, we look at the load. So, now, we're looking at the load piece. Less than an hour for about 42% of our students. Again, 763 students responded to this question. That's about 63% of the students in grades three through five last year. The next slide, we found to be really interesting in a couple of different ways. So, the blue columns from 2016, the green columns from 2019. And you can look to see that for both students and in grades nine through 12 and six through eight, the homework load decreased from 2.9 to 2.5 for our students in grades nine through 12, and from 1.5 to 1.1. So, just a little more than an hour for our students in grades six through eight. What we found fascinating, so this was the first time that parents were surveyed, if you look across, if I can do, there we go, that our students in grades nine through 12 and our parents both reported, same group, the exact same number of hours of homework as did students and parents in grades six through eight. So, we thought that was pretty remarkable. And then, when we think about load perception, so then, what do we really think about how much homework we're getting? Call this the three bears graph. We had about 1,183 students respond to this and about 549 parents in grades six through eight. And so, you can see that in this graph and in the second, the next one I'll show you for grades nine through 12, the percentage of parents is greater who think that their students have too little homework than the students think, right? So, 66.7% of parents feel it's just right. About the same for students and parents, but parents thinking students have too little homework as compared to the 20% for students. And then, the same thing grows actually for grades nine through 12. But again, students thinking they have too much homework as compared to what parents feel. And then, the last thing we wanted to talk a little bit about is just the parent expectation. They asked to choose three words that would best define your success for your children. And so, the top three words, this is a nice wordle that they put together for us for grades seven through eight and nine through 12, were happy, good, and happiness. So, we just found that really terrific, that that is the hopeful outcome, where parents are defining success for their children. And we are happy to take any of your questions.
First is a comment, second is a question. The first comment that I have is that I'm really pleased that we're spending time talking about these types of topics. As we were driving to Taekwondo this evening, my daughter and I, listening to NPR, we were listening to the news about the teachers that are striking, I believe it's in Chicago. And they're striking because they don't have enough nurses or social workers or specialists in their school. My daughter turned to me, she said, you know, I'm really happy that I go to school here because we have all the help that we need when we need it. So, you know, I think that this is great that we're spending the time talking about this and how we get better, as opposed to trying to address deficiencies that, that we don't have. So, my question relates to, I'm trying to remember, the slide 21, 20? Around engagement, particularly in, in the high school, and the change from middle school to high school in terms of engagement. So, this is really telling to me that we have kids in the middle school age range who are pretty actively engaged, and then, as they go into high school, they, they transition more into just doing school. So, I guess, my question is, what, what are the next steps? Now that we've identified this as a, as a, a pretty big trend, what next steps do we, we take to move the respondents more towards the fully engaged side? And, you know, how do we, how do we dive into this to understand what's happening between six through eight and nine through 12?
Yep. So, first, know that Larry and his team are going to be taking a look at these results as well, and so, that's a big piece. So, we want to hear what their thinking is around this. But from a district perspective and the work that we're doing, I do think the steam work, I think, trying to think about more interdisciplinary kinds of projects that students can engage in will be really helpful because I think, you know, that's not doing school. You have to be cognitively engaged in what you're doing and thinking about that. So, I think there are some things that we can do curriculum-wise as well. We're looking, as where Dawn and I this year are walking and visiting classrooms with all of our principals, and these are the exact kinds of things that we're talking about with principals. What do you, what kinds of engagement do we see, and what kinds of feedback can we be offering to teachers around those kinds of practices?
Yeah, the one, we're, I've used it now with five of our principals, including at the high school and the junior high. We're looking, we're using two equity walkthroughs to sort of look at, through different lenses, how we're looking at classrooms, particularly focusing on students, student and, student behavior instead of teacher behavior. And we've been focusing on rigor and relationships. Those are the two big ones. And so, the conversations that we've been happening around what is or isn't happening in, in certain classrooms, and then chatting about that has been, has been huge, but.
So, around standard two, so in the evaluation process, too, we're revisiting our evaluation work together as a district leadership team, so about 60 educators, supervisors, and evaluators. And we're focusing in on standard two, which is teaching all students. And what we are trying to do is shift our, what we're looking for in classrooms from what the teacher is doing to what the students are doing, right? And having a lens and really thinking differently about that work. So, I think that'll also help.
I'll just jump in as well. You know, a couple weeks ago, I presented kind of the first blush draft at a district strategy. And I think, you know, we, we've seen a lot of work around wellness, we've seen a lot of work in, over the last few years, to begin the work around equity, and certainly around social emotional learning. And I think the, probably the most prominent addition to this next strategy is around engagement. That wasn't by chance. We had actually seen this data before. And, you know, this is actually an indicator that I would love us to look at as a district as kind of one of our key indicators that we look at annually, or every biannually maybe, depending on how we do these surveys, and really think about how do we increase engagement. And I think it's, there, there's a couple complex and yet simple strategies to do that. One is to really look at the types of courses that we're providing as opportunities for kids as they go through high school, that there's a lot of particularly steam-related courses that kids can take that get them into hands-on learning opportunities that are relevant, they mean things to kids in their daily lives. I also think there's opportunities within every class to provide an increase in the number of hands-on learning opportunities that kids engage in. And I think doing those two strategies alone, you would see a real shift.
Before I call on someone else, just piggybacking on what Adam asked, I wonder, because we have a funny division between our grades and how this survey is, is the, is the drop-off really from eighth grade to ninth grade, or is it really from sixth grade to seventh grade? Because we, I mean, I imagine you guys can take apart the data that way, but it just makes me curious.
We can. If we don't have it here, I can look for it quickly while we're talking. And, because we, but we can certainly come back and disaggregate.
So, I have a similar question, only on one of the first graphs we looked at. So I have a similar question only on one of the first graphs we looked at, and that had to do with students who feel they have a trusted adult at school. I'm encouraged by the trend, but I still think the numbers are low. And I'm wondering if we can identify the drivers on that trend, and my hope is that we can feed the drivers.
So one of the pieces of data, sort of underneath that, they asked the students, who in particular in the school is that person? And the, by and large, it's counselors that folks are identifying, which is interesting for me to think about, given how often our students, most of our students are able to interact with counselors when we look at our ratios. I also think, I forget where I was going with that thought, but it'll come back to me, Paul.
Can I offer one thought on that too? You know, what was interesting, and we didn't share this data here tonight, but for a lot of these indicators, we actually also get a comparison of how our students responded versus peer cohorts, which are all high-performing similar districts, you know, across the country. And our indicators in those areas were significantly higher than any of the other peer groups.
That was where I was going, thank you.
It's not where we would want, we certainly want to continue to improve that, but when you look at similar schools across the country, that's a higher percentage than many places are getting. The same idea with the engagement pattern. That engagement pattern is almost identical to all engagement patterns as you progress through, from elementary to middle to high school years. That's a, that's pretty typical. I'll be honest, it's also a pretty sad statement, but it's been the topic of why high schools are really continuing to look at how we're addressing student needs and why we need to continue that discussion.
Yeah. So we were able to pull up that data, and so it's just, it's just about the same. So if it's just seven through eight, we have 37% of our students said doing school, 35.7% purposely engaged, and 20%, 20.6% fully engaged. So off by a few percentages when you take sixth grade out.
Well, there's a lot of data to cite and talk about, you know, the 41.3% of high schoolers think they have too much homework, 67% of them think they're, are super stressed about school, only 12.6% have real and deep engagement or full engagement. And their homework only dropped down 20 minutes in three years. This is, all this data is on the heels of three years of work on our part and attention. So I guess I read this, you know, the last couple of days and just felt sad. I felt sad and disappointed, and I was kind of curious to see like what air you would bring about it with you, because I think this is humbling, and I think I'm embarrassed and sad, and this isn't good enough. I just think students in this district are super stressed, I don't think we understand the difference between rigor and load, I don't think parents understand what they have to do at home. It's completely, you know, a problem coming at kids from like every aspect. I couldn't believe the 82% that sleep with their phones in the room, I was shocked. So the things that we could be doing as parents aren't happening, the things that the district ought to be doing aren't happening quickly enough or with enough attention despite three years of focus and paying and highlighting and talks and saying to our high school, look at your assessment schedule, look at this, look at that, like, it's just, I don't think we're completing things at a good enough pace, and I don't think these numbers stand behind all this attention and work. And we have had some like leadership turnover, and so I would really like to think that with your position, Don, and with your very long stay with us, Peter, that we're gonna do better. But I just want you all to know that the feeling that I had, and I'm going to now impart upon you with a lot of emotion, is we haven't done well enough in this, and our report card kind of stinks, and I'm not, I don't know if anybody else got that sense, we're all talking about it here very neutrally, I don't feel neutral about this, this isn't good enough, we have to work harder. And I think we're going to now with better leadership, more consist, less drama, I have to think that like, you know, because we brought in challenge success, like, this is a great report card from challenge success, from, you know, from our students, from our parents, so we have to do better. And I cannot, you know, say this with enough emotion.
I'll jump in, and I appreciate your thoughts very much. And I'm also going to look at the positive that by long tenure, you mean into the future, not the, like, 15 months of the past. So, you know, I think, I think here's a, here's a challenge, that's the real-world challenge in this district, and I, and I agree with you that we really want to continue to see these numbers improve. But there, as a school district, we serve a lot of constituencies, primarily it's our students. But it's, the schools don't exist in a vacuum of the expectations of the community, and I'm gonna, you know, I'll be really blunt, after, you know, being here a year and a half now, almost a year and a half, while we want these areas to improve, there's no interest on any part of the community to not continue to be a high-performing district. And there's a tension, I think, that exists between how do we continue to have strong academic performance and tend to kind of the intellectual capacity of the schools and the students' needs, with how do we balance that with creating this environment that is supportive, caring, reduces stress, reduces unnecessary stress? Some stress is good, too much stress is unhealthy and actually leads to poor academic performance. Like, you know, there's, there's a lot of research behind that. So I think one of the things that you will see, and, and I've talked to area superintendents about this, but in typically high-performing districts, change is going to be very slow, and it can be infuriating in the moment, but vast fluctuations in practices also can lead to very unintended consequences. And I think what, you know, and I've talked to enough high school teachers to know that, you know, they really have to think about, how do we work these strategies into our current practices in a very thoughtful way so that we can reduce the stress on kids but also continue to make sure that kids are learning at a high level? And I think that's, I mean, I fundamentally agree with you. We want, we want to see this improve, but I also want to be sensitive to the need to continue to educate students well and with excellence, but again, we have to get rid of the unnecessary stresses that kids, I'm not saying it well, but it's kind of balancing all of the needs.
And if I can converse for a minute, one perfect example of that is us changing the start times with a horrible, like hardly a difference in sleep patterns, like, and that's where it illustrates like a greater community problem, right? Like, this is where, you know, we did our best, it wasn't what it should have been, in my opinion, in terms of like shifting the clock, but we did it, and it isn't getting followed up at home, obviously, in terms of more sleep, it's not translating to more good sleep for kids. So I totally agree with you there, and I really appreciate the tensions. And I'm, and I do think we're paying attention to all the right things, and I don't mean to diminish anyone's work or effort or attentiveness, and I agree with you that slow, measured change will be better. I just feel that we were so ahead of things with this program, and I just hoped for like, I hoped to open this and be like more pleasantly surprised, and it saddens me, and that's not to put down anyone's efforts, it's just to say, like, we have more to do, and I'm excited for this team to do more and for parents at home. And I appreciate your public message, your public service message. I think we clearly have to be a little bit more blunt maybe about some of like the very black and white issues about what's, what's really unhealthy for kids, I guess, it's.
Yes, well, you know, change is slow. I know, I agree with you, change is slow. I wanted to kind of go next because I had some, a question about the sleep, and I had a question on, on the homework independence slide, just to kind of details. One, when I saw the nine hours, just nine, I think I know where that came from, but, you know, I looked up the American Academy of Pediatrics endorsement of the American Academy of Sleep Medicine Guidelines, and it says that 13 to 18-year-olds should be sleep, sleeping eight to 10 hours per 24 hours regularly to promote optimum health. And I'm just wondering why nine, and what, because we knew we were coming in on the more toward the eight, eight hours of sleep end of things, and it was disappointing to see that the high schoolers aren't there at eight yet. I see a difference in my home with my high, with my kids who are in high school, for sure. They're getting more sleep, and they're getting eight hours, actually. But I just wonder why nine, why just nine?
My guess is because of the range from the academy, that they just sort of settled on the middle, between the eight and 10.
Okay, I would like hope that we could put a range in, just so people are aware that, you know, there's different sleep cycles, so, so that was one thing. And then slide 24 on homework independence, I'm wondering why, can you unpack that, having materials? Because like 20% of kids said that they either don't or sometimes don't have materials, and I think that should be zero, but maybe I don't understand the question.
We want, this was part of the equity piece, to make sure that we're not assigning homework, that students would not readily have the materials at home, like internet access, or they'd have to go to the store and purchase something to actually complete the assignment. So that's where we, we need to hear from our elementary principals about what, as they dig into their own individual data and then look at those kinds of homework assignments, like what really does that reflect?
I have a question, so if we, I forgot the slide number, but it's a student survey, and then it showed that teacher support and care. If we go, we could go there? No, that's one that, yeah, here. So see that number? It just, you know, from 2016, 4.1 for grade six, eight, only point one per, one, point one point, I think. And then for the same thing, for grade nine to 12. So I'm curious, I think we did nothing to improve this, number one. And I want to know what could be the next, I mean, what could be the step to improve this? And then we can see the number jump in the next year. All right, thank you.
I think some of this is going to be data that you're going to hear from Mr. Shen and Mr. Dory directly with some of their reports later, honestly, because they're going to be looking at that as a school. In terms of the number of adults, the greatest growth that we saw was in grades seven and eight at eight point, what was it? Nope, it's this one. So our, just our students in grade seven through eight, in terms of the number that felt they had a trusted adult, went from 61.5 to 70.5 in one year, and the eighth graders had, or the sixth graders, excuse me, had like a 3% shift. So there was a much more substantial shift in the number of students at the middle school, seven and eight, who said that they had a trusted adult in school. So we know that they're doing things specifically. I know you're talking about the second chart as well. That one is a little bit more curious, and it involved, the top one is one question, the bottom one is a series of questions, and the, the numbers were aggregated, so I think that one's a little bit more difficult, and they're going to be working to sort of pick that apart and think about it.
I just also wanted to jump in back to what Peter had mentioned earlier, though, that's on a Likert scale of one to five. And when we looked at comparable other districts across the country who are relative like us, that, we're already high. So the 4.2 and the 4.1 on a Likert scale of five was already considered quite high in comparison, so it's not much at all of a bump, but already where we were on that Likert scale was already high in comparison, so.
Michael, did you want to come up and say something? I saw you waiting for a while.
I mean, I just, by nature of being a high school student, I think I might be better suited waiting for Mr. Dory and Mr. Shen, but I just guess I wanted to chime in if I could, and first of all, second Adam's point about the engagement with the high school decrease, taking a look at, I mean, I personally always thought it was just inverse to workload as workload increases as grades go up, obviously, but I guess my main question was like, like my takeaway was that like there was a lot of things that the district can do around, let's say, objective measures, like sleep went down objectively, we took some measures to do that, homework went down, we can measure that, the number of hours spent, I guess even, but like, and then I just didn't see that translate as much to perception-based measures, if you will, as part of what Michael is talking about, or slide 10 with the most common phrases that was sort of, I guess, I, looking at the videos that was shown, that it sort of, that challenge success seems to be more, very focused on that perception aspect. I'm curious, from, if I was to take a district-level perspective, I'm curious what the next step is to go in that direction to fulfill the mission in that way.
I can jump in on that. So, you know, I think that's a great point, and that it's actually something that we're talking a lot with our educators about this year as well through goal-setting processes. You know, there's really four Ps in data that you want to look at, people, perceptions, performance, and process. And if you look at the combination of any of those data sets, you come up with a different view of how things happen. When you look at data, there's two types of data you want to look at. One is that quantitative data, which are the things measured in hard, hard numbers. But, you know, and in doctoral research in particular, you learn that that's actually only half of the picture of data, that qual, qualitative data is actually equally important as that, and that's around those perceptions. We tend to shy away from it because we're more comfortable as statistician, statisticians with numbers and hard figures, okay, we reduce this by a half hour. Whereas some of that softer data, we tend to shy away from, but I think we can't lose sight of that when we look at how we're impacting students and families, because you can't necessarily measure that in a number, you're never going to have a seven for impact on students and how students perceive something, there's, there's no such thing. But by tracking the types of qualitative data over a period of time, you do get a different picture. You can't only look at qualitative, you can't only look at quantitative, but you have to look at both to figure out what your overall impact is. Does that get to that point?
Yeah, I think so. I guess, like personally, I don't have much of a data set to draw on for my personal, it seems like we've been rather aggressive, at least at the high school, in pursuing those objective measures, shall we say, and like the things like that can be measured more objectively, and I'm not sure that the perceptions have trickled down, I guess that's where my question was coming from.
Got it.
And I'm curious what the policies around that to try to get that to trickle down, and community buy-in, I think was mentioned a couple of times already, and that sort of concept.
So I think in answer to your question, I think it actually relates to some of the things that Maya brought up earlier. So when we first got the first set of results back with challenge success help, we identified three different areas, start time and schedule, homework and workload, and the family, student, and school engagement, thanks, Don. And so when we think about all of those things, start time and schedule, those were somewhat operational kinds of things that we could change, right? We changed, we changed the bus schedule, we changed the start time, changed the bell schedule this year for the high school. When it came to homework and workload, while, you know, when I was talking about the different aspects of the policy, we can change the amount of work, right, the number of hours, and that can be measured, but the quality of the homework, right, that's the piece, questions two and three, that's going to take more time to work on those pieces. And then family, community engagement, I think that's just always ongoing, we just can't stop doing that, we have to continue with that. So as, I've been thinking about this, and I won't speak for Don, but I do think those three areas, we were able to do probably relatively quickly because they were more operational, those are things we could just do. This next phase, when we're talking about engagement, that piece is going to be more intense, it's going to involve a whole lot more folks at the table thinking and talking about teaching and learning, and I think that's when you're going to start to see some of that trickle down and have a change in the perception.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I was just going to say that I actually feel really optimistic, and I think the reason why is hearing Peter talk about emphasizing engagement and your questions around engagement and the STEAM presentation. and your questions around engagement and the STEAM presentation that was at the last school committee meeting was also something that gave me a lot of optimism that there are actual real changes that can be made in terms of curriculum, which is where the students are living. And I really like the emphasis on focusing not so much on stress because I think that we do live in a community where our students aren't shying away from hard work and they're not shying away from their own, you know, competitive in a healthy way or sort of striving for excellence. But if that's done without engagement, that's, you know, where I see the doing school and where things start to fall apart more emotionally for kids. And so I really am excited about the 58% of sixth to eighth graders that are purposefully and fully engaged. And I think that's wonderful. We want that number higher, but that's such a great starting point to try to find out what's working for them. Who are these kids that are fully engaged and purposefully engaged? And where does that sense of purpose and joy and passion for learning come from? And how can we expand on that? And I think the STEAM and also the person who spoke about teaching art in a different way, just those ideas of allowing students to take some direction for what they're learning and find meaning in it is really important. And at the high school, it's, you know, 40%, I guess, that are purposefully or fully engaged. And I'm just so curious about what is working for those students? And how are they so engaged and how can we bring more of that? You know, and I imagine a lot of it comes from outside of classroom learning that helps students feel engaged, all of the extracurricular parts of school that help them feel alive and passionate and that what they're doing matters. So I love the emphasis and I think that, you know, that tension of excellence with health and purpose, you know, I think is really important. And I really appreciate the breaking down of engagement into the three types of engagement and looking at that in a deeper way. Just a couple of details, I guess it would be helpful on the slides if the number of respondents was sort of posted on each one. Yeah, that would be great to see. And then I also was curious about the N size for them. If you feel like there's a difference in people who are responding from people who aren't responding. Are there more dissatisfied people responding, more satisfied people responding? So I was just wondering if you saw a pattern in who's responding and who's not, so that our data is meaningful. And then I also thought it was really helpful to hear how this compares to other districts. I have to say, when I read the hours of sleep, I thought, wow, this seems great. Just compared to what I hear as national averages, high school students tend to sleep five or six hours a night, I believe. And so seven's not ideal, but it's approaching eight. So that, to me, felt also like not a terrible number when you compare it to sort of what you hear going on nationwide. So it's nice to hear about how the connection to an adult in the building compares to other school districts. And, you know, I think that's another important one to emphasize, how can we increase that? How can students feel more connected with their teachers? And I think when what goes on in the classroom with these longer blocks at the high school allows for more interactive, purposeful, student-driven, student-directed learning, that the relationship to teachers will also probably feel more meaningful when they have that time together. And so hopefully that would also shift toward feeling like their teachers are trusted adults in the building. Would be an important goal.
Okay, so we're like 40 minutes behind. So if you, I don't want to cut off conversation if people really still have questions for Deb and Don, but let's try and stay away just from proliferating on what they said. Because we're like pretty far behind, okay? Angie, go ahead.
Yeah, so just want to clarify, the question, the survey question is actually standard challenge success questions, right? They're coming from, not, we didn't design it by ourselves, it's just inherited, right? I just want to clarify that.
So you can see at the top that the questions that were from challenge success and then the ones for the students, parents, and teachers, those were developed with WestEd.
Okay, so I guess that, I cannot grasp how we improve in our homework rigorous from the survey because this are kind of the standard survey. So as you can see that, I remember that when we, well, my kids are older and the old homework policy is 10, 10 minutes per grade and as they go on. And this is, I actually, I kind of like that because it's like building muscles that you build this gradually. And I'm concerned because I look at the data for the junior high and there is one thing that's pop up, which is the time management and the procrastination. So my biggest concern is when they, they don't have this habit in the elementary school when they go into the junior high school and they are kind of facing the homework load they never have had to deal with before. So I have some concern on that kind of jump over there and the high school load, it is still there. So I also noticed the, in the high, in the junior high that the, for the, one thing is missing from compared to before, which is the high quality is kind of disappear. And also the four point, then our high school students still has, has, still has, were still facing the sleep problem. I did, I did look, look at the handbook and the homework policy is noted in the elementary handbook, but it's not part of the home, high school handbook. And I understand that for the high school, it is, you know, because of the schedule that you cannot really coordinate this. But I guess the question is, are we going to look at the policy because we have a homework policy now? Are we going to implement it district-wide that consistent that for every school is going to have the same implementation? Then we expect the kind of similar result? Are we going to look at that when we look, are we, as we move into the, toward the next step, especially across the elementary school? Because the elementary school from the data that I see is inconsistent in terms of a homework policy. And the next question is, I noticed in the high school that one of the biggest pressures from the grading and the tests. So does that mean that we're going to take a look at our grading policy district-wide? And will we be able to, how are we going to improve in the next step in terms of this area? And also one more question is-
Angie, that is like eight questions. We are like 45 minutes behind. Let them answer and if you need follow-up afterwards, then.
Okay, sorry about that.
We appreciate your passion for the subject.
To the first question around the consistency, I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to do this and to hear now back from all the elementary principals. The goal of doing the survey was to see if there's consistent implementation of the policy. So that's one of the things we will be looking at, especially as we get all of the elementary reports back. And then thinking about what other kinds of things can we put in place to ensure greater consistency across all the elementary schools. So that's one piece. The second question was, I'm sorry?
Angie asked a lot of questions. So I think some of them, you're pulling out pieces of the data where it said there was things about high school, where it was talking about load and the consistency.
Larry, I think those questions, again, will be forthcoming and we'll have more information.
There's still other people that have their hands up and we have, and we have an audience member that wants to ask a question. So I'm going to have you hold it at that, okay? Because they're going to come back to us with additional information. Would you just like to come up?
I just wanted to echo pretty much what Maya said. I'm a parent, very concerned about the homework load. I have a sophomore this year. Sleep, stress, anxiety over the homework load is gigantic. Stressed about returning to school, stressed about doing extracurriculars, which I encourage, don't drop because that's what keeps you connected, that's what we want. We don't want you in isolation. So I echo everything you said, I'm getting emotional about it too. I do think it's not at a quick enough rate as well. I think it's not going to affect my sophomore. He's going to be in the same boat the entire time he's at the high school. I'm hoping it changes for my seventh grader. I also have a quick question, which I don't know in terms of the survey. When they're talking about kids' perceptions about too much homework and the load, did they separate it between like kids that are in like CP, honors, AE, AP, all of the different levels to kind of check where kids are? Because I know when they're entering the high school, there is the talk about if you're in a CP level class, you're going to have this much homework a night, if you're in an AE level class, you're going to have this much. If you're in honors, you're going to have this much. So that definitely played a factor into what classes my child was allowed to choose going into the high school. I'm wondering about the equity and the wellness in terms of kids across all levels, kind of looking at the same amount of homework load. Because, I mean, I know my student would have chosen more and we said, no way, you're not allowed to. Already having to send him to bed at 10:30 at night with the stress of not finishing his homework after four and a half hours. So I think it's a huge concern. When I saw that homework was going to be discussed tonight, I was like, I have to come and at least start voicing my opinion on it. So I just didn't know if that was looked at when the kids did the survey.
Because it's a national survey, they don't know all the different course levels that every individual district has. They only tease out AP courses, so students indicate if they're in AP, taking AP courses.
I think that's a huge piece here in AB in terms of the workload that I think that we really need to look seriously at. Because it is definitely affecting the stress and well-being of many of our kids.
I want to save some time here. I just want to ask a question, I don't think I'm going to looking for the answer today. So for our homework policy, I don't know, it seems like there are a couple of years. I think the most effective group is the elementary school kids, not for the junior high, high school. From the table we have here, we can see the six to eight. I don't want to reach anywhere there, but everybody knows, I mean, the six to eight grade and the nine to 12, they're fine. And for the elementary school, we have many datas here, but there doesn't draw any conclusion. So I hope our curriculum designer, our, you know, so assistant, I mean, the district leader, really take a look at the elementary school, give us what kind of the policy. Our policy written is very, very well, I think that that's three lines over there. But how the different school interpretation, you know, how their implementation is really different. We have junior high and high school, they're totally fine. My kids are totally fine, it's nothing to do with myself. So I just worry about, there's a concern. When those elementary school kids right now, they are reaching junior high and high school, are they going to feel more stressful or how do we do, how do we do with that? You know, so I hope, you know, the data here for the elementary part going to draw some conclusion, but there is no conclusion for that, thank you.
Okay, now, John, hold your hand out, you tried to raise it. All right, I think that was a really good discussion, obviously something that we need to continue to talk about. And you guys are coming back in the winter, right, to report back?
Right, end of January.
Or something from the principals or there'll be follow-up and we can talk about it more. So thank you for your presentation. All right.
Yes.
Yes.
Most of life is lived after high school. And today we had the opportunity to reflect on what a life of full engagement actually looks like with the death of Elijah Cummings. So Elijah Cummings, you know, served the state of Maryland as a representative of the House for more than 20 years and recently was the chairman of the House Oversight Committee. For people who have seen him on television over the last few months, you've seen everything that you were looking for in this survey. You've seen behavioral engagement, cognitive engagement, and affective engagement. And you saw that even as he entered hospice care a few weeks ago and continued, you know, through last week to participate in the Democratic Caucus conference call. And so, you know, I'd like everybody to not look too closely in front of them, but to look all the way down to a deep, meaningful life and see that the goal is, you know, regardless of these trends here, there is a longer game that we must play and it's very important to play. And then the last comment that I'll make about this is, if you looked at Elijah Cummings, you would find both rigor and load. This isn't, you know, for everybody, but it's for some people. And I think we need to let everyone find their own level with respect to rigor and load.
Thanks, John. All right, Dave.
Dave is here to provide us with an overview of the FY21 budget development process as well as draft guidelines that were developed in conjunction with the budget subcommittee.
Would you like me here or there?
I think you're easier to see over here.
Dave, finance people don't often get the limelight here. Nothing.
You've got two documents that I don't think are going to appear on the screen, so we'll just walk through them briefly. You have a FY2021 budget development schedule. Starts at October 3rd. The materials have been sent out to the district administrators. Next to, the next item, I've got a little box that says, "You are here." So we're at the inception of the process, obviously. The next step is the internal work that's done by the day help. We lay out the school committee budget agenda in a series of meetings between November and January that culminates in Budget Saturday, January 25th. The budget binders as a preparation for that exercise will be out on Friday, January 17th, 2020. I put in this year the expected release of the governor's budget on January 22nd. It's three days before Budget Saturday. I expect there'll be some high interest in that if the Student Opportunity Act passes. And we've discussed that briefly in a prior meeting. And then the final stages after that. So it's all laid out in a familiar format from prior years. The budget subcommittee has looked at this and we've made several, several changes to it. But this, I would propose, is the, is the final schedule for the FY21 budget. Questions? Budget Subcommittee also developed in conjunction with the administrator, district administrators, FY2021 budget guidelines, you have that. There are a total of 11 bullets. I'm not going to read them. If you have them in front of you, the first two are somewhat related. The budget trend needs to be sustainable and we recognize that. And I think both of those two guidelines react to that statement. The next two are also somewhat related. The budgets need to reflect the district's stated values and also our previous commitments toward implementing those and recognizing those values. The one about exploring bringing full, tuition-free all-day kindergarten to the district, there's been some discussion about that, to the extent that is a budget, a piece of the budget. That's, that's part of what we're, what the framework has been set in developing that budget. We've engaged a consultant that will help us to evaluate special education resources in the district. That might be something that has manifestation in the upcoming budget. Negotiations are underway with bargaining units. The district's capital improvement plan, the heavy lifting was done last year. Now we're in follow-through, getting the projects done and oversight of the work that's been done and the financial implications of that. We've discussed the thought about issuing the bonds sooner than later. It may disrupt the previous anticipated CIP cash flow. But overall, if there are savings to the district and the taxpayers, we're confident that we can show that to be a positive thing. And the last couple of things are also related. Maintain annual, small annual budget variances and adhere to the newly formed policies. We need to manage the- We need to manage the E and D balance. We may not hit a 2.5% budget increase every year. We got a lot of kudos for that last year. It's the numbers. It's great when you can have 3% and 5% decreases in health insurance. That goes a long way. We may not be able to come in at that low, but we're trying to do it with recognizing that we need to have a sustainable level of budget growth for the district. So that is the schedule and the guidelines that we anticipate using this year.
Thanks, Dave. As always, completely thorough. Look, there's not even any questions. Great job.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, John, no cartoons today.
Good time if there's any feedback on the guidelines.
Oh, true. Does anyone have feedback on the guidelines that he laid out? They're in the packet. Not that separate item there. Oh, sorry, Paul. Thank you.
They appear to me to be very comprehensive. I think when I was on Budget Committee, this is more than what we were doing on that committee. So it's kind of taking it up a notch of more, I would, for lack of a better word, professional guidelines for how the committee's going to operate. So I, you know, it's a serious endeavor, and these guidelines reflect that.
Just wondering whether we should change the STEM to S-T-E-A-M.
The fourth bullet, it says to continue to implement multi-year phase in staffing for STEM. If we want to change it to STEAM. Great. Good suggestion. All right. Next thing in new business is the recommendation to accept the FY 20 gifts from the Acton Elementary Schools PTOs. Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Well, that passes unanimously. Sure.
On the budget guidelines, it's STEM coaches, and they are called STEM coaches, even though it's the STEAM curriculum we've been working on. So that's why it said STEM, because their title is STEM coaches.
That makes sense.
Specialists.
The next item on our agenda is, many of you know, the MASC conference is coming up in just a few weeks, and one of our responsibilities is to select a voting delegate and an alternate voting delegate for the annual meeting so that we can weigh in on the resolutions. We're not going to, the resolutions were included in your packet to look at for next time, but there was a deadline for when we need to select a delegate. Diane, did you want to speak to any of that or, I don't know if there's any?
So last year, I was a delegate, Angie was the alternate. We were both present. I had voting rights, but it's a great opportunity to see, you know, what goes on in terms of advocacy at the state level. So I recommended whoever's going to step up and volunteer for that.
You're volunteering? Do you like to be the voting delegate? All right. Is there anyone that would like to be an alternate? Who's going? It's just, there's just that one part of the meeting, right, where they have to, I mean?
It's Friday afternoon. I don't know what time, but it's about an hour, maybe an hour and a half commitment. It's not a big deal. Yeah, that's really interesting.
Thank you, Beth.
If no one will step up as the alternate, I'm happy to do it.
Do you have other responsibilities as our, like, Division II person? Does that?
Not at that meeting. No, thank you.
Okay. Great. Okay, so we need to officially vote that, right? So all those in favor of Angie?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I'll move to designate Angie as the ABRSC's voting delegate and that Diane be the alternate voting delegate at the MASC annual meeting on November 8th, 2019.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Thank you, Diane and Angie. All right. So as I said, the resolutions are in your packet, so I recommend that you look at those because those we will discuss at the next meeting so that our delegates know how we want to vote. Ongoing business, we have the approval of the minutes from the meeting on 10:03, and on your tables, right, Beth, this is what you told me, on your tables are a copy of the minutes with some suggestions that were made ahead of time. So I don't know if you want to take a second to look over the changes that were suggested or if anyone had anything additional.
I will move to approve.
Do we need to say with the proposed edits? Or is it as amended?
I'll move to approve as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Okay. My abstained. And next, we have the School Building Committee update. So, did you say that?
I will turn it over to Peter yet again.
All right. So I think the biggest thing, there's actually a memo in your packet to this effect, and I think it's also on the table. He said, with the separate motion for tonight, in preparation to come up to, for the towns to be able to develop warrants for the special town meetings, both of the town warrants include votes of the school committees as recommendations. And then in addition, Boxborough includes language around recommendations for the building project, right in the narrative of the warrant. So they're different in both towns. So there's two steps that we're going to be asking for. One, tonight, is for the recommendation that appears in the warrants for special town meeting. That's what we're asking you to vote tonight, and we, the reason we're doing that is Boxborough needs that for next week. So their timeline is very tight to be able to produce the warrants. The second vote that we'll be asking for will take place at the next meeting, but we wanted to put it on your radar tonight because that is the official vote of the school committee to approve moving forward with the building project. The building project requires a series of votes. The first of those votes is a vote of the school committee to authorize the project to proceed and for the funding to happen. That then has to be approved at both towns in special town meetings. And then the third step of the approval is for ballot elections in both towns. So the piece that we're asking for tonight is the recommendation that will appear in the warrant for Acton and Boxborough. For the Acton side, it's only the vote of the committee. For the Boxborough side, it's the vote of the committee and the language. I also believe, and Tessa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if there's any dissenting opinions on the committee, then those also, whoever was dissenting would end up writing up the dissenting opinion, and that would also appear in the Boxborough special town meeting warrant. That's something that's unique to Boxborough that doesn't take place in Acton. That's tonight. And then again, the official vote to proceed with the building project and funding is next meeting. But I wanted to conclude the draft language for you tonight because these are both obviously important votes for you to understand what we're requesting.
And just so you understand, it feels rushed. I understand. But the Boxborough warrant is being signed on November 4th, and our meeting is on November 5th. So, our next meeting. So that's why the language is drafted ahead of time, and as Peter mentioned, you don't have to vote yes on this, although I will remind everyone that this is a school committee project in a sense, that we've been authorizing the School Building Committee all along on this. So, but as he mentioned, in the Boxborough warrant, there is always a, if it's not unanimous, there is always a dissenting opinion that is actually published in the warrant. So it's absolutely fine, but just know that you will have to compose that if you dissent. Yes.
Yeah, I have more of an operational question. Are we making two votes, one for the warrant articles and one for the recommendation that's going into the Boxborough warrant? Or are we combining that both into one vote?
You don't actually vote the warrant articles themselves.
Okay.
This is the recommendation that gets included. The warrant article is very much spelled out by MSBA. That actually, we took it from the MSBA template. We then had our project manager input the specific requirements of this project into it. That was then reviewed by our attorney. It's been sent to both towns for reviews by their attorney. It's also sitting at MSBA for the review by their attorney as well. And that's for your vote next time, warrant articles and ballot.
So the only thing we're being asked to vote on tonight is the language in the recommendation and whether or not we recommend?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Yes, Michael.
So this is going to be, this version, this draft version is going to be included to the warrant, right? The warrant article, right?
It's not the warrant article, so the way it will appear in the Boxborough warrant, if we agree on this language, and this is a draft, there could be, you know, small changes made to this tonight.
Who's going to change that?
We can do it now. If there's something within the, the school committee is going to recommend the building project, so as a whole. So if you, if you want to change the language that is in the draft right now, we can do that. That's why it's in draft form.
My question is, if there's no change, then this, just this paragraph is going to be included in the?
As it will say, it will say whatever the number of school committee members, you know, Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee recommends whatever, 11 to nothing, whatever, and then it will say this.
So, but the article has something else?
Yes. This is not the article.
And what, who's going to make up the other parts of the article?
That's what Peter just explained.
The MSBA.
The MSBA dictates the language in the actual warrant article.
What I can tell you, if you, in the packet, in the memo, it's like the, and I apologize because it was a longer memo, the second page of it, I gave you the draft language for next week's vote, which is again, the official vote of the school committee for the building project. The warrant articles are remarkably similar to that vote, and those are the official articles. I didn't include the separate language because it's so close to what you're going to see there that it would just be repetitive.
So then, I'm still confused, then what's this?
So, Michael, in the Boxborough warrant, right?
Yeah.
That gets mailed out to everybody's house. Okay? So it lists the actual articles with the legal language and everything else. And then underneath each article is always a recommendation by the boards or the committees that are affected. So like the select board will say, there will be multiple paragraphs underneath the warrant article that correspond to, like, the FinCom will have a summary like this of their recommendation, and the select board will also have one, and the School Building Committee will also have one. So that's what we're voting on is the language from the school committee.
Right. And just as clarity, like, I think the FinCom ended up voting unanimously in favor of the project, so they'll have their recommendation there. But if there was a dissenting member, then that dissenting member would have an opportunity to write the kind of dissenting opinion, which would also appear in the warrant, so that it gives a fair and balanced perspective.
Exactly.
I move that we adopt the summaries written.
Do you have to edit?
Okay, that's fine. Now we have discussion. What? Her microphone's on. You have to turn your microphone on when you.
I just had one idea for an edit, and I hope that's okay.
Yeah.
One thing that's felt really important to the Boxborough, I'm sure Acton members as well, is how fiscally responsible the proposal is, how cost efficient it is. So just wanted to add a couple words about that to it.
Okay.
So in the sentence that says this project will allow over 1,000 students, could we say this cost efficient project? Does that make sense? I felt like it was important to highlight, there was so much work that was done toward making this really a cost efficient project, and it didn't seem like that was highlighted in this recommendation. I thought it might be helpful for voters when they read this to know that it's fiscally responsible or cost efficient or, I was just sort of looking for a little bit more of that language, so I had another place where it could be added instead, but that was, so that there, okay, and then the new building would allow us to address space concerns, accessibility, efficiency, and environmental quality in a fiscally responsible manner, maybe?
I disagree with that, you know, amendment for conservation, because, you know, it's related to, because I said many times, you know, I'm not happy, I'm not going to support that, you know, that very low effective reimbursement rate is not cost efficient. So I hope we're not going to add this amendment.
So, Michael, this summary is for those who support it. So are you going to, are you going to, are you saying that you don't accept that, but you are going, I just want to know where you're going, because if you weren't going to accept it at all?
Yeah, if not, add this cost efficient. I don't know how this cost efficient add into here, but if it says this project is cost efficient, then I cannot support this. Otherwise, you know, I will support this.
Okay. Angie?
Maybe you can change to the state-supported funded, you know, because it's a project that's supported by state funding.
So the first sentence ends with the partnership with the MSBA.
Could we change that to in partnership with MSBA? Because I feel like a lot of the work was really done with the MSBA.
Sure. Support the work that the School Building Committee has done to date in partnership with MSBA.
So instead of the, you say in.
She's saying instead of and the.
So, can I, just a thought, I'm a little worried we're going to lose track of which changes and motions we're making. I'm not sure I heard resolution to Nora's, I heard a couple comments on it, but I just want to make sure, because I just think that we need to resolve one concern at a time.
So how do we handle a vote of that? Right now, there's a motion that's suggested on the floor, and so you're discussing that, and you're going to amend it at all.
Right, right. So, yeah, right, so Nora made a suggestion, and now someone?
So my thought would be that it will be better to allow an open discussion, whatever people want to put on the table, and then go down the road of making a series of amendments to actually implement whatever changes people want to make.
So I agree that we didn't have resolution, though, on this. There was a couple comments. Michael dissented. What do you, Adam?
Yeah, so, you know, I hear what Michael's saying in terms of Nora's comment. I don't think cost effective is the right way to describe this. I do like fiscally prudent or highlighting the financial advantage of the consolidation of the three buildings into one, because that feels more appropriate to me. So there is a sentence that says, we recognize that a single building likely operational by 2022, consolidating these three separate educational programs has the added benefit of increasing operational efficiency with shared common spaces. I haven't thought this through all the way, but I think that is the sentence where we add another clause that speaks to it being a fiscally responsible to consolidate the three buildings.
So since readers of the warrant will not necessarily know what the MSBA is, I suggest that we write out MSBA so that everybody will know what that is. And then to this discussion of fiscal responsibility and leverage, at the end of the sentence that Adam was just talking about, operational efficiency with shared common spaces, I think that should be shared common spaces and services. That's slightly confusing because not everybody will understand which services are actually shared in a building like that in terms of janitorial services or food services or other things. But I think that captures the spirit of there are some shared services, albeit ill-defined. And I actually do like Nora's original position of saying that the building will allow us to address all these things in a fiscally responsible way. I think that captures the idea that we looked at numbers and tried to do something good.
I agree with Nora's amendment because I've
I agree with Nora's amendment, because I view, you know, considering the options, that, the alternatives that we have, this project I look at as two, two and a half buildings for the price of one. I think that is incredibly, incredibly cost effective. So I'm, I'm happy with Nora's amendment.
And I, I think the, the reasons for the reimbursement rate have been unpacked in detail, 1.7...
Originally, it said when operational by 2022. Likely operational. I mean...
Just say consolidating.
We could just start with consolidating these three. I would be happy to. I'd be happy to. So, on the second line, where, the end of the line where it says "and the," we're suggesting replacing the "and the" with just the word "in."
And then, while you're up there, the Douglas and elementary, Douglas and Gates Elementary Schools, is E and S capitalized there?
They're not, they're... Not proper names. Okay, and then about two-thirds of the way down, at the end of the line where it says "we..."
The last.
Yep, right there. So now we have it saying, "We recognize that a single building," and then inserting after "single building," yep, right there, is a fiscally responsible choice, period. And then we suggest to delete "likely operational by 2022 comma," and capitalize "see" and consolidating.
So, so can we consider, in that second sentence, this project, can we consider this cost efficient project? And the reason why I'm bringing that up again is I think that if we're asking people to vote for this, that is first and foremost in many voters' minds, that this is cost efficient. And not only because we're consolidating buildings, but because the project is so carefully designed to be cost efficient and because we're having financial support from MSBA. I really think that needs to be highlighted, so that it's not a letter that says we're excited about a new building, but we're excited about how cost efficient this particular project is for our towns. It's a real savings, I think people need to know that.
Just, just a note, I'm adding things here, just to track the conversation, not because it's agreed that this is going in.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I just think you have to remember that this isn't the only thing that voters are going to see and hear. We don't have to capture and hear everything about it. There's going to be extensive explanation about how the numbers were arrived at, there's going to be an opportunity for questions and answers. So I don't think that we need to feel the pressure to include absolutely everything, you know, in, in more than one time.
Well, I, I would object to add that cost efficient there. I'm fine with that, what Adam said, a building, a single building is a physical response, responsible choice. I'm fine with that, but adding that, so I, I don't think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Yes?
My, my, my response to that would be that I would rather have us, have a unanimous vote than insert additional language.
I do have one comment. This is, this is, can I? I think it's on, yes. Gary Kushner, Finance Committee, Boxborough. We spent a lot of time with the educational piece in designing the building. I don't really see that covered up in here, and I'm wondering if where it says, "This building would allow us to address space concerns, accessibility, efficiency, environmental quality, and the planned educational program or the education," something like that. I thought it might help a little bit. Just a comment.
Okay, so I think we should take out cost efficient, because I agree with Adam in that I would rather have a unanimous vote than add language, where I, I appreciate 100% where that sentiment is coming from. I think we're getting partially there by saying it's a fiscally responsible choice. So what Gary suggested is after, right, Gary? The new building. Down here, lower, the new building will be fully handicapped, no, not there. No, and right in the middle. The new building would allow us to address space concerns, accessibility, efficiency, environmentally qual, environmental quality.
So, would you like me to add support, and support the educational program before the other items or after?
Before. I thought educational vision.
Program vision.
Well, I think what Gary was speaking to was how much time was put into actual, that actual document of the programming, so maybe program. So, can we also eliminate the word handicapped? Well, the educational program was the actual document that, that we came up with to, to port all the things.
Did you get handicapped?
Yeah.
Did you have to take that out?
Yeah, I just want, yeah. I always see it as like, I just want to see it as, staff may make some recommendations to it, but I want to make sure that it's your voice.
Just say fully accessible, rather than handicapped accessible? Okay. Yes? Okay. Okay. Yes? So, so if, if, if there is no more discussion about that, then I can accept a friendly, friendly amendments to Ginny's initial?
I propose a friendly amendment to Ginny's initial motion, as indicated on the screen above us.
Second. All right. All those in favor of the amended language?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. That was a lot of work. Good job. From budget. So we're looking for your vote tonight on a updated charge for the budget subcommittee. This, the budget subcommittee discussed this on 10/8/2019 at that meeting. We finalized the changes, and now we are looking for a vote for approval.
I'll move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, those pass unanimously. Thank you, Diane, for your work on that. ALG report?
So I was not able to attend, and Amy is not here. I do not have her report. Oh, she didn't send it. Okay. Must have been the NyQuil. All right, BLF has not met. Just a, just a reminder that the tri board meeting in Acton is on Tuesday, November 12th. John, would you like to report on the FinCom?
Yes, the, everyone has to be that, on, for, you, 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 you. Apologies. The Acton Finance Committee met on October 8th, 2019. The ALG spreadsheet was reviewed. Steve noted that the placeholder for the school bond, $2 million, was not consistent with current loan projections. A planned update of the ALG spreadsheet for the October 10th ALG meeting resolved this concern, but I think the school committee needs to be mindful of the challenges of keeping current and consistent financial information in the public discussion of the building project. And I would notice, and aside, that, you know, if you look for sources of potential confusion, you know, if you look at the proposed warrant article, you immediately see $116 million. If you go to the school website, of course, you see $117 million. And why is that? It's because we've already paid $1 million. But that's the kind of thing that is very confusing, so we just need to make every effort to keep those things explained. Paul Campbell, the town engineer, presented the status of the West Acton sewer. The estimated $15 million project would be funded by government contributions of $3.5 million and user betterment charges of $11.5 million. The new school is designed with a septic system because the school project cannot be contingent on the proposed West Acton sewer project. The approved MSBA cost for the septic system is $550,000. If the new school and the West Acton sewer system are both approved at special town meeting in December, the project manager is expected to exercise the option to transfer the septic system cost of $550,000 to the sewer project. And as had been noted elsewhere, the cost of the school project does not change if the sewer option is exercised. After the meeting, I spoke with Mr. Campbell and learned that the schools in town have discussed the logistics of sewer installation relative to the school building project. So that the sewer would not impact the school building project, the sewer line and pump house would be installed by July 2020 as phase one of the sewer project. The required high-pressure main sewer line is a six-inch diameter pipe, so that installation and connection to the existing sewer treatment plant is not particularly difficult. And then, again, as a tweaky kind of note, you may see that the sewer is ultimately bonded at a lower rate than what we have because they have access to some clean water bonding, which has a favorable interest rate associated with it.
Thank you, John. All right, there are three warrants on the agenda now being circulated. Vendor warrants 20-008 and 20-008 PR in the total amount of $2,320,106.22. And payroll warrant P2008 in the total amount of $2,588,371.8. And that is the last item on our agenda. Were there any FYIs that you wanted to highlight, Peter, before?
No, there's, I, I think the FYIs speak for themselves. The only thing I'll say, we did email it out earlier to you, but we wanted to include a working draft of what the chair and I use to kind of plan the course of meetings over the, the period of the year, so that you had some sense of what to expect on a bigger scale. I will just add the caution that that is absolutely a working document. It changes several times per week. There's no way to keep emailing that out to you, but what we will do is every month or two, we'll send you kind of a PDF of it, so you can see what's changed and what's coming up. But it does change regularly based on items that come in and out.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, we're out. Thanks.